Good evening, everyone, to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting this Monday, it's February the 7th, at approximately 7:08 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Yeah.
Rob Nickelman.
Here.
Rob Powell.
Here.
I see Brown.
Here.
Daniel Jenkins.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Lance Derry, Vaxton. There is one.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise, we will have our prayer this evening led by Brother Ronnie Beautiful Professor of Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Scout Ralph, if you could lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray again. God, we thank you for the opportunity that we have and the freedoms that are ours in this country, that we can join together like this, have a meeting and community as Greenwood. Oh, we thank you for your many blessings. We ask your direction and guidance for this meeting. The Lord, I pray for, I pray for the Terry family. I pray for Lance and his family as they grieve the loss of Earl. Lord, give comfort and peace to them. The Lord, I pray for others in our community that are hurting of the loss of loved ones or sickness. God, help us to be sensitive and loving and caring to one another. Again, Lord, we thank you for just the privilege of knowing. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May it succeed. Thank you, Mr. Reaper. Appreciate that. In case anybody doesn't know, Mr. Micker, would you please stand up for just a second? This young man, I attended a Cub Scout meeting a few years ago. It's been several years ago.
Several years.
In fact, I didn't recognize him when he came in. And I was there to be all cool, right? As the mayor, I was newly appointed. I think it's been that, newly elected. I think it's been that long ago. And it was question and answer time, and I thought, they're going to ask me what, where to get chocolate ice cream and stuff like that. Well, this young man stumped me real quick, and I remember the, what did you ask me?
Something about Obamacare.
Yeah, Obamacare. Next question. So, this, ladies and gentlemen, is the future mayor of Greenwood. I want to make a point. So, thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for leading us in the pledge. I would ask the council to address and take a look at, if you haven't already, take a look at the minutes for the January 3rd meeting and the regular city council meeting and also the special call meeting on January the 26th. Entertain the motions. Approve those. I like that motion.
Second.
You have a motion, second.
Rob, would you please?
Yes.
Ms. Gray.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Reconitions, acknowledgements, and Brother Ronnie touched on his prayer on the fact that we've lost Earl Terry. And let me tell you something, as a young man going to Greenwood schools back in the day, when you walked uphill both ways in the snow and all that, right? There was a Mr. Earl Terry that was in charge of the grounds, which meant everything at Greenwood schools. And I can honestly say that I was much more scared of Earl Terry than I was of any principal or superintendent anywhere. So, we have lost a great man. So, keep Terry's in your prayers. Councilman Lance is out here, 9:47, the Councilman Tim Terry's uncle. So, keep that family in prayer. Yes, sir.
Mayor, we also, AC's lost a sister this week.
I did not know that.
So.
Absolutely.
More than her, same.
I did not know that. I'm sorry. Sorry to hear that. Absolutely. So, Brown's family, I attended a funeral today of Sergeant Shively, Bill Shively, if you knew him. Very lost to the city and county, so. A lot of stuff going on. We'll move on to reconitions and acknowledgements. Do you want to do that now or later?
Oh, yeah.
I don't care. I'm honoring myself this evening in case you want to.
May I be sworn in?
I need to be sworn in.
And, uh, that's about here in the fourth place. He's not used to having this done to him, really. He's usually good.
I'm going to lead him to the square.
All right. This is for the Compliance Advisory Panel, it's a governor-appointed panel. And what exactly do you guys do?
We advise. Just leave it at that. This panel was particularly involved with ADEQ or with Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality on recycling and anything related to recycling. So, it was an honor. My term, my term, I guess, I was appointed four years ago. I got a re-up, so it's an honor to serve.
The second term.
Yep.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Doug Kinslow.
I, Doug Kinslow.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Compliance Advisory Panel.
Compliance Advisory Panel.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks very much. So, my main question was, when I was appointed four years ago, was do they serve lunch? And they did, so it's an honor to be back on. Okay, so, committee reports. I know, I believe most have given or sent something in or verbally given, and you have some in your packet or on your tablets, so. Boys, girls, so I don't think Kenny's here, didn't see him, probably running some basketball this evening. SRCA, I don't see Lisa, Parks Commission, Mr. Goldstein is here. No, no. Water Waste Guard, John, did you have anything for the?
I have a written report.
Yes, sir.
If I got a written one, I can give it.
Well, that's fine. If you've got, they've already got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any questions about the reports, gentlemen? And if something's missing, as always, I encourage you to let me know or Daniel know, we'll find out from those folks that turn in those reports. Citizen forum, I had, no one has signed up this evening for Citizen Forum. I know gentlemen are here, developers, did you guys want to talk at the point in the agenda later, buddy? Or do you want to speak? Or, hang on. Or you better? You want to wait till?
We can just wait till.
Okay. Perfect. Finance report, Mr. Marsh.
I never make this brief. There's a couple of reasons why. One is that the budget was approved on the 7th of January, and as a result of that, the budget numbers haven't been inputted for the January data, so you have no budget numbers to compare the actuals to. You do have the report, it's in your, it's on your tablets. I will give you the highlight, there is on the second page now, every month you'll be getting the P financial data, so you'll see where the trends are. Right now, one month isn't really a trend. The city sales and use tax budgeted growth was 6% as budgeted. Cumulative, we started the year off at 10.7%, 10.7%, 5.7% above our current budget growth. As far as the county sales taxes this year, we budgeted 10% growth. We started the year with January collections of 18.8%, which is an 8.8% above budget growth. Like I said, one month doesn't make a trend. Advertising and promotion tax revenues, A and P budgeted growth is 10% for the A and P. Cumulative is, right now, 34.69%. A lot of that had to do with a little over $1,000 of it, right at that number, because really, collections from the previous years was catch-up, there was a lot of backflowing that was done, a lot of accounts that were collected, and it came in in January, so if that number's a little skewed, it'll kind of even out a little bit later in the year. It's not going to remain that high. Our average monthly retail sales growth between 2018 and 2021, and this is actually the fair crude sales growth, was 45.8% for all the entities that contribute to the A and P. The net increase in cash flow for the month of January was $261,000. Current fund balance for all funds is $16,071. That is a 1.65% increase from our ending balance of $15,810. Our net income for all city revenues and all city expenses was $388,223. That's $1,002, $1,002 in revenues, $884,000, or $884,000, right, in expense. And our capital expenditures, we spent $34,555 in January. Our budget is $5,008. Reason that that number is so low is because a lot of the projects couldn't get started until the budget was approved, and those are actually projects that expenses have come in from the previous year that were carryover projects. And I will offer this invite to those councilmen that were not here for the actual special session. The financial state of the city presentation is usually that budget presentation, where I give you the lowdown on what the trends are, where we are, what the budget is, how the budget's solid, if there's some issues that we need to be looking at. I would be more than happy to review that with you. If you'd like to stop by in the office anytime, I'll share the highlights with you so that you can get caught up to speed if you have to see. And with that, if you have any questions at the moment, next month's will be a much more detailed and depth report because I will continue that.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Agenda additions, I think we're going to have 10 to add, as a gentleman, we have plenty, we have 20, so. Sunny's getting up. Oh, you're coming up for that. I thought you were going to ask. Okay, I'm sorry. So, we'll go right into unfinished business. Number one, planning ordinance, repealing, replacing ordinance 20-10, mobile food vending regulations on first reading. Mr. Bell?
Mayor, Councilman Ms. Derry, first item is the repealing, replacing ordinance 20-10, mobile food ordinance. This has been tabled for a couple of months because Hunter and Robert Kenny was working on this ordinance, and wanted to make sure that it was the way that they felt like you gentlemen wanted before they presented it to you. So, I'm going to get Hunter up here, and Hunter can explain to you what him and Robert have come up with on this ordinance and the things that we have changed from the original ordinance to the new.
Evening. Everything that I've changed, if I allow the whole spot, is in mind. If you've got any questions over it, feel free. I had in the entire section on food courts, we did not have any regulations for that previously. I changed basically 85% of all of the rules and regulations.
Also, there are some sections that apply to A and P, and we passed that by the A and P commission, and I will explain others for those.
Would you mind, I'm not attending that meeting myself, can you go over what that was?
Diet and enforcement.
Yes, ma'am. Just kind of clear, I guess I can see it.
Yeah. So, the 1% that the A and P will receive is still in effect. At the first year that they apply for a permit, it's going to be a $100 non-fundamental A and P tax fee, and every following year, it will be a $50 fee. That's just going to guarantee that A and P gets some money. Food vendors are hard to people to track down, so. Kind of do as much as we could right up there. I added in a $25 permit review fee, that's to pay for planning sound to review, to firm it some locations. We didn't have anything necessary to do with each other?
No, just that section G and H, page two, and I think also, and I don't think you mentioned it, in the penalty section, if they are not, non-haven of three consecutive A and P tax payments will result in violations.
Suspension of rotation to permit.
So, the purpose of this, gentlemen, obviously, is what it is, what it says, and Hunter works hard, and I'm saying yes, too, and A and P's looked at this, so the purpose is to get everybody, I guess literally, on the same page and treated the same, you know. Greenwood is seeing an increase in these food vendors. I'm pretty excited about it, to be honest with you. I think it's, I think it's cool that that's still a word to use. Is it, then, ladies up? So, but we want to get everybody on the same page, so everybody pays the same amount, and we're in, a little bit in control, because I think it's going to get bigger for us. And I think at some point, the city, we've had a little bit of conversation about possibly a city truck, I mean, what do we call it? Food court? That we have, but we're not there yet. We may, we may get there at some point.
So, I believe it's $175 for someone to just start out, right?
Correct.
Getting a permit. And that's a business license, physical, A and P fee. Now, you see, they were paid $250 for a year permit.
Solicitor.
Solicitor's permit, so it's cheaper than that was.
I want him to go away.
That's, in your opinion, just the one time.
He's mad about it.
Isn't it?
Permit fee, yeah. That's the one time.
Not every.
Seven. So, I got questions. So, it's off the thing, yes, sir. On page three, we're catered, we're talking about permitted food trucks and trailers may operate in locations on C2 industrial, and those have to leave after 12 hours.
Correct.
On the following page, though, we're talking about a whole separate thing.
Correct.
We're talking about having electricity, and what are those zones?
They'll still be in the same zone, C2 or industrial, but those are going to be more for your food vendor courts.
Okay.
That's going to be the defining term there. So, your regulations are less steep if you were in a food vendor court on the actual food vendors themselves. My intentions for this were to create something that allowed people to come to town, pay a minimal fee, count trial and error through, be able to tender at multiple locations, if they lack the revenues they receive, and parking food court will be more permanent, be able to set up shop, not have to take their trailer home every night. But this ordinance is a combination of 18 local municipalities around our size, and all of their offices.
Well, if I understand what you're saying there, the orange truck guy there is not the mobile food.
Correct.
So, he's going to leave every night.
Correct.
I'm at Marsh, not, I mean, I've got this ordinance on per three, my father in.
Second. I have motion in a second, like, two seconds, actually. Mr. Daniel.
Mr. Micker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yes. In ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 40-10, regulating operation of mobile food vendors, mobile vendors, concession trailers, fish carts, the city of Greenwood, Arkansas require a permit declaring emergency, so we're not necessarily there emergency, are we? Is this just first reading? There's still an emergency clause in there.
Was that left on, on purpose or not?
Do you want a better emergency?
For the food vendor?
Right.
No.
Tell me if you agree with that.
Yeah, I'll remove that one.
Correct.
So, require a permit in the first place.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, gentlemen. Number two, this is Water Waste Guard Commission, $50 per served town, fee rebate, I've left that on there for the purpose of visiting in a later date, I'm not sure we're still there yet, but this may be the time. You guys want to address the council book? Sure. Mr. Brown, if you'll introduce yourselves to everybody.
Jamie Brown.
No addresses, Greenwood. I'm just my swish.
944 West Center Street.
Thank you, sir. I used to coach Jamie in basketball, this is why he's in the construction business today. All right? Thank you.
You've probably earned a lot of basketball.
I absolutely did. Yes.
So, this is just, this is just an addition to what we've discussed before, but I know some of the questions of the last meeting were, what are some of the other municipalities in the area charging? So, this just gives you an idea of what they're charging, if they're charging anything. Down at the bottom where it does say, we're already at $400 per lock of sewer taps during development, that's just the material, so that doesn't actually include everything that's involved in the sewer tap itself. But I, I'm glad we will answer any questions if there are any. Unlike the, I want to be clear, unlike the water tap where the city will actually come out and do the work and provide the materials for this project, for the sewer, the city will do anything. I mean, they're doing a lot, but they won't do any actual physical labor or providing materials. We will provide everything.
And so, you gentlemen, for at least your ear, I think, Mr. Brown, visiting with the Water Sheriff Commission recently on this, this, right? And I think the commission, I think, tabled this just for now, is that correct, John, or? Or, I know there was some discussion.
We talked about something slightly different in ordinance, and we didn't, we're going to write the ordinance.
And then?
And what we're hearing tonight may.
Okay.
Impact to what we write in that ordinance.
Okay.
If in.
Is there, you mean, for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
No need for us to go to the right field if y'all want the left.
Sure. All right. Any questions then, or comments from Mr. Brown?
When you said builders are charged, Stumshire, Lexington, Bar, Stumbridge, where, what are their charges?
Their charges. Third act, what's that, the three?
If, if you, if there's existing, why? They're not, if they have active tap, there is a charge.
Right.
And that's the biggest, I mean, especially if we're talking about ordinances and stuff like that, I mean, it's not an all-encompassing thing that if you don't do it here, you have to do it there, vice versa. It needs to be, in my opinion, if the city has to go out and do a cap, they should charge a tap fee. If they don't, they don't. To me, it's.
Charge's charged for what we do.
Charge for what you do and charge for what you don't.
Wasn't that considered an impact fee when it was done, right? I mean, it was called, I think it's called tap fee, but it's done as an impact fee.
I think there's two portions to it, and John can.
Right, there's 350 tap fee and 500 impact fee.
This 500, we keep talking about as an impact.
Impact fee, correct.
Well, back in the past, it was just for additional revenue, it was fine, I think. It wasn't, when you say impact fee, it was up to curb development, right?
I don't know, I wasn't the.
I think it was, I think it was all paid for the development, and we didn't have so much money.
It was, yeah, things were different, time and.
While we reviewed the minutes, it let me do 40, I just missed our funding money.
Well, and I think that's, Tom, can.
Pretty takes, tornado in Van Geren, and Greenwood was kind of exploding, and Greenwood had quickly gone from just a few thousand, it was kind of doubling, I mean, we had Kirk, uh, Crooked Creek, that was being built, and it's just after that, I guess, Westwood was coming on, and then Clements Edition down Denver, it's the newest. And the town was doubling.
A lot, a lot, pretty quick.
Very quick.
Westwood was in the 80s.
Was Westwood before Crooked Creek?
Westwood went, right, bust, and then revived.
Revived.
And then.
When did Crooked Creek go in?
Early 90s.
Early 90s?
Uh, it's 94, and Clements started construction right afterwards, so late 94, early 95.
So, there's your period when this went into bliss? When, when, because isn't it, wasn't it put in in 96?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right.
Tornado in 96.
Alan and Dust was modern thing, from 95 or 96.
Is there a difference in, I'm not sure what's going on in 90, or what's going on in 90.
Four skills.
Phase one.
Four skills, this sort of brand of developers.
I'm in this case.
Developers that are actually in the city for a person.
I agree, I agree. Yep. You couldn't say that louder.
Well, I'll pick it, my friend, and Alan, the mayor, little.
Does that sound good?
93.
King's Mountain Ranch.
93.
Right.
And what year was that?
Well, it was late, you, or, yeah, I mean, I would view the Osprey and Eagle and everything on that, that went in here with, or how towards here.
Well, when phase two come about, the sewer capacity was no longer available.
Yeah, it was early, it was early 2000s, and then phase two, three, that was four skills.
And then it was no longer available?
That's right.
That's the way I remember it, too.
Just for the record, Mr. Rocky Walker's other discussion with Mr. Powell. It's okay, I'm just.
The discussion was around when this ordinance came.
Yes, no, absolutely. I'm just making sure on.
Four skills was one of the additional ones that were going on, and the city was required, the city required the developer to put in utilities and paper to propose subdivisions, and then it was later on given away. And then when they come back, they were not reimbursed, and also the capacity was not there.
Yep.
We have a bad track record.
I agree with you.
Is that correct?
Yes, we're not bitter, though.
We're not bitter.
Were you supposed to make reimbursement?
Oh, yeah. There was a deal, I mean.
We get a lot of deals made that we don't know about.
This was an official deal, though. It's in the record. That needs to be looked into further, to say the least.
I hope you're not bitter.
It's sewer evidence.
Okay. That's good.
That, that discussion is, I mean, why, previously, like, I don't know, I have to look at whatever ordinance 492 is, if all 492 is, is that $500 fee? I mean, in my opinion, about things like this, I don't like the idea of we're going to reimburse it. If you're just going to take it and give it back, then don't charge it to start with. Just forget about the $500 fee if it's just money in, money out. But whatever we do, I think it needs to be across the board, very clear, so we don't get into, we had an agreement with these village, and five years from now, somebody's going, we had an agreement with these village, and y'all never held up your side of the deal, and, you know, or the next developer comes in and says, I want the same deal you gave these village, and, you know, that all of that's just, that all gets messy fast. So, whatever we do, I think it should just be pretty cut and dry.
Well, I think the rebuild, I mean, speaking of turn, Mr. Tom, though, reimbursement is kind of, kind of issue, is it, or not?
It's a little more work for me, but that doesn't matter. We will account for that separately as far as the payment is had, but the reason it was put in is to make sure that they start, lead a project, not just abandon the project and then you've already forgave the $500. It was an enticement to them, at least that is your discussion.
492.
Back to the, back to the day.
492 admits.
No, he's up for that.
Yeah, back in August.
Yeah, just recently, yeah.
Uh, 492 admits ordinance 423, which is the sewer tap establishment, and it's, it's only the 500 of them, and it says it's just, it's shall we use for sewer improvements only?
So, the 423 is only.
492 is. Same as.
Four twenty-three is the original.
Yes.
Which was another discussion, instead of ordinance and providing ordinance. Get rid of all those.
Yeah, we try not to do that.
That's why you ever, usually like tonight, we've already had motion or what he's trying to do with the food truck is review our place.
Going back though, it's going back to what Tom's talking about, I mean, we've got these subdivision regulations and a planning department and an inspector and all that. Whether we charge five hundred dollars or not, somebody should do, follow the regulations, right? Or you don't get a stiff in occupancy.
Yeah, you're not.
If you don't follow the rules.
I agree. Yeah, no, no, no thought whatsoever on what I'm understanding from anybody, but.
I mean, I don't think the five hundred dollars is the best punishment to do things right.
I think.
It shouldn't be, if we're doing things right. Which is saying, you've got to follow our rules and regulations. Right?
We're inspecting anywhere around Mr. Cross, I don't turn the eyes up here, it's not lying, yes.
While, while we're doing, we are.
Okay, I know that was discussed the other night as the commission made, so none of that will change. In fact, you might, but inspection, we're gonna.
John, do you have any input on, on this?
Well, um, based on that four hundred dollars materials already, you know, in cost, we've got some too, we've got already check written for about a hundred dollars a lot. I'm very sure we're doing engineering study, make sure, need to check out, so we've got a hundred bucks in ballpark. We're going to redo the lift station. We're estimating us a hundred thousand dollars, but we're going, we don't know for sure what it's going to be. And we're going to make it big enough to take care of more than just these guys too, so we's making them pay for, or allocating all that and then it'd be unfair to everybody, the reason we're doing it, so that's about two hundred fifty thousand, what's that? That's almost another few hundred dollars, a lot of math, it's not good as you should be. Uh, we've got some money into, now you're not going to break it one way or the other, uh, we do two kinds, we're two kinds of tax, there's ones for new subdivision, the builder puts in a lot. And then there's ones we have to go to existing man and actually tap in. Our cost to do one, we actually go to a man and tap in, is about a thousand dollars if they gather and tap in. And, uh, for, if we weren't doing the lift station and the engineering study, just regular subdivision and done those things, we've got a little cost, we've got new inspections and review plans, it's not much. So we do have some costs in, but don't break it one way or the other.
The, uh, ordinance four twenty-three that four ninety-two amends, it says if the, it was upping the price of the, the board to put a sewer tap in, like it needed more money. That's what I read across the board and the revenue was down, the cost of doing it was more than what we were charging, so.
And that was, that was in the language of the ones you reflect to. Amen?
I sent both those to you then, to the ordinance.
John, I have another question for you, when you talk about, you know, uh, the final inspection, you know, what's all involved with that final inspection and do, you look at this one or, or everyone out there, you have to go out there and do a final inspection on there?
Well, it's a three step process, we, we inspect the plans, make sure they works out, and that's mainly the directors' plan. Then during the construction, we go out and inspect, make sure the gravel bed is done right and all that stuff. At the end, uh, we're doing it right now on Bell Road, we're starting to quality control. Repressor test the pipe section from the main sewer main. The vacuum test the man holes, kind of because of structural integrity. And you run a man roll down through the pipe to make sure what crust in during the plant is still round. And, uh, we really don't do that, it's the, I think, Tom, we're there observed, make sure it's done. So like I said, we have inspection costs, but it's not huge, but we do have some. I think that's a good question, I think.
This, uh, four twenty-three. This is side relation. Uh, four inch pipe, two hundred and fifty dollars. Six inch pipe, three fifty plus cost overruns. If the tap larger than six inches, it'd be based on a minimum charge of six hundred dollars plus cost overrun.
And that's, uh, I guess that's the way I look at it, you know, that, I mean, we have the three fifty tap fee, uh, and we have the five hundred dollar impact fee. This here is just addressing the five hundred dollar impact fee. And I guess one of the things I look at is, you know, when you say impact fee is, uh, how it's impacting the, uh, the current citizens in the, in the current, you know, uh, sewer and, you know, uh, water treatment, you know, sewer treatment, uh, uh, facilities, I said. I heard, uh, John say that, uh, you know, Randy looked at a, uh, a, a lift station is what you're saying?
A lift station upgrade, yeah.
A lift station upgrade there, so, and so, uh, it's, you know, there's that impact that we have to, you know, say, that we have the capacity to handle, you know, this new subdivision. But also I, I kind of still look at the impact fee when it says it relates to our other citizens, you know, is that, you know, we still have uh, citizens here in Greenwood that, you know, lived there for a long time, you know, and, you know, in their neighborhoods. We don't have sewer there and, uh, you know, I think this still, you know, is a means that, uh, helps us, you know, get sewer to existing homes, you know, in the city area, but, but also to existing parts of Greenwood, you know, and I could see that happen over here, just north of us. Uh, there was lots that were vacant for a long time, you know, and all of a sudden when we got sewer ran, uh, up there in those neighborhoods, the lots, you know, filled up. And so I, I see that this impact fee is, is still a, a, a way to help us get sewer to, you know, our existing citizens, you know, here that had been paying taxes, you know, for a long time. And so they still don't have, you know, access to sewer.
I don't disagree with you for sure, I, but I, I think with or without this fee, I think we should be focused on that. And I know you're not disagreeing, I don't think, but we should be doing that anyway. Fee or figure, no fee, but, but I don't know, I think Tom's better equipped than I, or I know he's better equipped than I to discuss the finances, what, what that means to the sewer department. John touched on it a little bit, do you have any?
A hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred on that development alone.
Yeah.
And you just heard the cost of a lift station is, that's very immaterial to the cost that they would have to do through infrastructure repairs. All of that impact fee came as a result of the fact that you didn't have a one percent sales tax at the time, it's permanent. And that one percent sales tax is growth, is growing, one percent sales tax is growing as the city will grow. As you bring in new people, new revenue streams, new shopping in the city of Greenwood. You're going to, you're going to be taking advantage of that one percent sales tax, which helps you do the infrastructure. You're getting a gift right now of a million dollars from the first tranche of the ARPA money to help infrastructure development for those areas. As a matter of fact, if they wanted to use that money to put the sewer to right now, to the areas that don't have it, they can use the tranche money to do that. Um, that's, you've got that on us as a side note, but what you want, what this whole discussion is about is how, how interested are you in creating that new development to bring those new people here with the competition you have in those areas? Of the other communities?
Will said, thank you, the, the point, and he made it clearer than I can, and again, if we're, if we're talking about, and we are talking about growth or, or lack, lack of growth. Everything that we do, you gentlemen decide, has an impact, I mean, we're using the word impact fee, whether it's dollars or what you allow to have one. So if, if, I just feel like we, what a, what a turning point or winding road that we could be at in making decisions, not necessarily Catholic Portsmouth or MAMMing or bargaining or animal, but just to get in the game. I know these gentlemen out here, and it's not just these guys, it's Rocky over here and the ones that don't come. Uh, whether they are bitter or not, I don't know. But I just don't feel like that, that we've done anything in many years, uh, to encourage building in our community. And I'm, I'm, I don't want to get on my soapbox again because it's, it's the same soapbox I've been on for a while, but if we don't start taking some moves and decisions to encourage this building, these buildings, and, and I'm totally on board with you for two, I'm sorry, East Village did it forever, but put something in an ordinance, put something in place to, to encourage some building. We, I know that as long as I've been sitting here and sitting out there as a director now almost fifteen years, we've been kind of whining as a group. But we don't have, nobody's coming to Greenwood to build. Well, here's an opportunity to make a difference. It happens to be this subdivision and it happens to be now, it could be another subdivision, it ought, it ought to be across the board. I'm just encouraging you councilmen to consider that, the big picture. I don't like giving things away either, if we can get paid for it, I understand that. But if we're going to be competitive, we're, we are, we are on the threshold of crowing, I don't, I don't want to make a big deal, but it is kind of a big deal, I mean, I talked about F thirty-five, thinking Portsmouth and all that stuff, and, and people are looking at us, I mean, we get calls in the planning department, when people want to come to Greenwood to build, and it's not just subdivision, it's businesses, so. I think it's, I think it's just high time we look really hard at what we can do to accommodate some of this, yes or?
We know the average that brought in the last, say, five years, since growth has slowed down a lot.
Average of buildings?
How much this has brought in this?
Oh, uh.
I was just saying.
The spot.
You're talking about the five hundred dollar, the average of what that has brought into the city?
About twenty-two thousand dollars a year.
So to entice people to come, we're worried about twenty-two thousand dollars?
Well, a hundred twenty-five thousand on that.
And, and, and of course, as, as Mr. Bailey rightly pointed out, I mean, it's a subdivision like this, we can't just, we're not ready to hook up to two hundred fifty-one homes, right? We're not quit yet. I think everybody in the room, Mr. Cross and Mr. Bailey would attest to that, but along with growth comes some, some cost, you know? And back to money coming back, and Tom said it better than anybody can, if you don't, if you're not willing to put the money out there, bring them in, you're not going to get any return.
I think, I think Andy Steve makes a valid point. You know that there's, we need to figure out how we pay for old parts of town.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I, I don't have sewer, um, at my house. But we got to figure out where the sweet spot is on it, you know?
And, and, and there's some movement toward that, I mean, you know.
So according to Ron a while ago, these, the rates in four ninety-two are actually three fifty, four fifty, seven hundred. So that, that, that was revising another ordinance. Which is, there's an ordinance three fifty-seven that was being revised by four ninety-two. I mean, what, what I'd like to see us do is go gather all these up, get rid of all of them, come back with one, one number, and say our, our tap fees are, one, two, three.
And I'd like that three fifty would need to be figured, I mean, the rate of inflation needs to be figured in whenever that three fifty was created.
But I think we should set our tap fee factoring in what we're all saying, which is, the tap fee needs to cover, a guy building a house, it needs to cover, you know, growth, more people, more growth brings more revenue for a lot of the avenues, tap fees being one of them. But I, I'd like to just go clean all this up, come back, here's the sewer tap fees. Maybe it's water tap fees, wire grab it, you know? And that, those tap fees take all this into account. And there's not a separate, here's this separate five hundred dollar thing where we, you give me five hundred, I give it back if you follow the rules, but you're supposed to be following the rules anyway, we're doing our job, so I don't see that as an enticement.
At the current eight hundred and fifty dollars, last year we budgeted twenty-one thousand for sewer tap fees, they collected ten thousand two hundred. That's at the full eight hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, just so you know, and the other thing I pointed out at the budget meeting was, we started the city sales and use tax in two thousand twenty-one at fourteen point seven percent. We ended the year at twelve percent, we started this year at ten percent. So our trend is going negative in city sales and use tax, but our trend in county sales tax is going absurdly the other way. Six percent we started the year, we ended at about fifteen point four, and we started this year at eighteen point eight. So there's a story there. And that's why I'm on the bandwagon too. Bringing people here is going to help everybody in the city because you're going to be bringing more money into the city to use for these developments.
So, so this neighborhood, what, is that going to be a six inch line?
Sewer line? Uh, code, middle code is eight inch. And, uh, so I'm able to have mostly eight inches from the edge of the subdivision to the lift station, they have an eight inch, which is, so it's going to be a little tight.
It's a four inch tap.
It's a four inch tap.
Four inch service line, maybe it's.
Yeah. So it's three fifty is the tap. Plus this five, that's eight fifty, right? So, you know, if we came back with a, a revised sewer tap fee that said that's six fifty,
we could have one tap for everything, or we could have one tap for new subdivisions, we, we don't lie as we put in, like they're talking about doing. And one tap fee for when we're actually having city crew out to bore into existing man, uh, there are really two separate acts, I mean, two different things, which different costs for us.
That, that's what we've been asking, we're paying to put the tap in, and then we're paying you because we put the tap in.
And if, honestly, if you go out there to do the tap on the backside of these in phase two, I know that an, an average tap costs a thousand dollars. Um, the backside of these, we're putting them all in, but if the city went out to put these in, they would be thousands and thousands of dollars. Because they're eighteen foot deep and they're tapping onto a ductile iron line that is significantly different than going out there and tapping onto something that's six foot deep and it's piece of plastic. Big difference, it would, each tap would cost the city six to eight thousand dollars. We're doing it now because we're going to have the trench open already. But it, it's, it's not just a matter of of, of a thousand dollars versus three fifty, it's a huge difference if the city would have actually gone out there and do the taps themselves versus us doing them now.
If they had a ductile iron, eighteen foot down, and we had to go in and tap, we wouldn't allow it.
Exactly.
I mean, bluntly, bluntly, we just wouldn't allow it, too, too hard, too dangerous, too difficult.
Your OSHA regulations with the staffs.
Which is what your speech, Mr. Brown, of safety was the other day.
Exactly.
On your crew, you know?
Of course, I, you know, I, I see that, uh, you know, like you're sitting there, that, you know, we, we could be right here on the threshold. Uh, you know, there's all the talk of, of what the, uh, the new, uh, I'll say one eighty-eight, whatever, that, uh, training, you know, the thing of, you know, the potential hundred people that's going to be coming to this area, you know, and I'm never going to get our fair share of them, you know, and, and sometimes, you know, if you don't have things in place, it's hard to get things in place while you're, you know, being overrun, and I, I feel like that's kind of the way it was good if this was in place, you know, ahead of the, the big growth spurt that we had. You know, because sometimes it's hard to, uh, get, you know, these fees
And that's what we're trying to do.
while you're in the process and stuff, you know, and, uh, now, so I, I think that we are at the, at the cost of possibly a, a another growth room like we experienced in, you know, from ninety-five to, you know, two thousand. And so, uh, I was wondering, you know, with this Stone Ridge, Legacy Park, and Stone Shop, I'm like, what? Here with local, local park, but what school districts are these in Greenwood?
They're Greenwood?
Yeah, those are.
Stone Shop.
Yeah, I think it's in Greenwood, too, but. And so I think, you know, that's a, that's one thing that, uh, you know, as Brooklyn, you know, comes to this area, I think, you know, that we're going to look at the quality of life, quality of schools, you know, and I think that's, uh, uh, one thing, you know, that, that we offer. And I think that's something that we have to sell ourselves short on that.
I would like to say one thing quickly on that is just that Rocky builds everything, like he just said in Greenwood School this year. He builds all his.
He builds all his stuff up towards the Fort Smith area, which is fine, that, that's a huge growth area.
So we're not bitter.
No, no bitter, no bitter, he's smart and good. What Tom was saying is that nobody in the Greenwood area gets tax revenue, it's the county. So if you guys don't entice us, which we're building our houses, no matter what, everyone here knows that, we're doing it. We're moving forward. But if you guys don't entice us to build in Greenwood, Greenwood is not going to be growing. I'm not trying to get on my soapbox here, but Greenwood will grow two hundred fifty-one homes and stop again. And you've got to entice people to come to town, Greenwood, I was born here, raised here, love this place. But you've got to get people to come here, not just outside of here. And I, and I'm not down to talk to Rocky, all these guys are the best around. But you've got to get people to build in Greenwood. What's that?
Check to the middle of that.
Yeah, 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 we're good, we're good. But you've got to get people in Greenwood, not in the county, that?
Let, let me talk about the county. I was talking to Buddy Samper three weeks ago, must've went on with y'all's life, if it's important to us. We can do anything we want to if we don't have a water source. Our growth kills the streams now, like, we don't have a water source. So at Bud and James' work, about their life, we started talking about developments, everywhere we put sewer, stuff starts growing. They're turning subdivisions down, James Porter. I think they're talking about Northern Maine area, I've stayed works, I mean, maybe other places, but they can't, they can't support it, they don't have a water line. So basically, you're talking to subdivision, you're probably talking in Fort Smith or Greenwood. I mean, the county, which is James Porter, they can't support much of anything, they just can't do it. Unless you're close to one of their big names. But then you don't have sewer, you don't have bigger lots, and no fire protection, which, which is, but it's mainly a thing that supports Smith. That's mainly it.
This discussion is great, and I appreciate it very much, and a lot of good points, and growth is, is, I don't know, I really want to ask Mr. Walker to come up and speak, if he would. He may not want to, one of them's already shaking his head up. Because we've got, we've got guys in, in the room that are putting in subdivision, right? You guys are doing it. It's, it's, I went out there, he rolled the ground, it's happening. Do you mind speaking on what would, and, and I don't, this is not a bargaining night, but I just want to hear from you, if you don't care.
Well, you know, I pulled my first.
And this wasn't planned, I didn't, you didn't.
Yeah, this is not, this is totally a wrong, I pulled my very first bill of permit, June nineteen ninety, in the city of Greenwood. Built my first house in Westwood Place. And have been building ever since, and then started developing, you know, I grew up in it. The, you know, I, I have had discussions with, you know, and I'll say this, the reason I brought that up is, when I bought my first permit, I was told, and it was the highest, the tap fees were high for water and sewer, they only got higher. Permit fees were not bad, all right, but I was told that we're working on the water quality problem, and we're working on the traffic problem. Okay, that was in nineteen ninety. And those are going, you know, we all have done, going to work on that, but that's still the two things that we can find the most. And then, yes, we would do some more development in the inside of the city of Greenwood, but I will say this, traditionally, it's gotten difficult. Now it's easier now, but it's been difficult to get a permit. It's expensive to get a permit, and it's the tap fees are just onerous. To, like Buddy said, we pay you guys for a sewer tap fee, and we put sewer tap in, you know? And as a developer, you know, we always provide the sewer tap, you know, anyway, when we do development. You know, and we would love to do some more stuff in Greenwood, whether it's single family, whether it's multi-family, we would love to, and, and plan on doing some stuff in the future. We have some stuff that we're considering, more than just, you know, what I'm here tonight, you know, for the main place. But, you know, traffic, water, great, are number one issue. Sewer is, like I said, sewer is a little sore stuff, because of, of what went down, you know, Ronnie Rouse, Paul Walker, Bob Luth, or Greg Green, paid, put that sewer in, it went down there, and they were told they'd be reimbursed by those people tying on, and they were never reimbursed. It's, well, like I said, it's nobody that's over and done with, but it is good that y'all are addressing that, so going forward, people will know where they stand, and there's something in place, you know, where, where they'll be more professional towards it, and I think it'll be more of an attraction. There is lots of things coming to this area that are great, and I will, I will, I will use a phrase that I use with City Fort Smith all the time, we're on the precipice of prosperity. All right, that's where we stand, and there's so many good things going on. I'll put it, I love, I love Greenwood Public School System, I'm a Greenwood Bulldog. Seven out of ten people that I talk to, the reason they talk to me is because they want to be in Greenwood School District. You know? When I was a kid, my parents moved to Greenwood, let's go to Greenwood schools. I mean, it's just, it's just a fact, and it's a great asset that we have here for the city of Greenwood, and, you know, nurture that, further that, no matter what. And there'll be some more development, Danny's got a beautiful project, their stuff, Sean and Buddy's got good stuff, you know, going on, coming on, and, and I commend it with that. But there, y'all can make it up, a little bit easier working, you will get some more development on. And here's the deal, it's a risk. You guys have to invest in the future, which enables us to want to invest in the future. You know, it's a symbiotic relationship.
The water, the water quality issue, that's pretty well done.
It has been, James Porter.
Traffic is.
Oh, no, not because of James Porter, our water actually is better than theirs.
Yeah.
Believe it or not. I'll show you the water test. Give me your address, and I'll bring you the water test, we take them to James Porter three or four times a week, ours is better. By the time it gets here, may not down at Harvard, but by the time it get here, it is better.
Okay, I'm striking her. I will say this, that is not normal in your mode, it's striking her.
What I want to ask you.
But I will say this, traditionally.
Oh, ten, fifteen years ago, my wife would chew my butt from something and it was worse.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, fifteen years ago, I won't argue that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it's much better now.
So if, if, if water quality is not the problem, you know, we all understand the traffic, and the traffic, what it is.
Is being worked on.
Being worked on, and we're doing, you know, it's a very expensive situation. But besides those things, those seven out of ten people, customers that come to you, or, or you, why, why not come to Greenwood? Is it tap fee cost, is it the process of permits, what is it?
The developers, that's the developer, developer will, but, but people, customers that are moving the area, that I talk to, and are moving from all over the country. I, I talk to people every week that are moving from, and I, I call it the reverse dust bowl. Everybody out here who went to California in the thirties, well, they're all coming back because everywhere else is going crazy. And I'll use another phrase I use, we're at bastion of sanity, believe it or not. Even though sometimes, and see, we are.
Give a tap on these on some.
Some drakers out there, so I'm writing that down, go ahead. So, but, but they're, they're wanting, most of them are going to work in Fort Smith, so they want to be on at least that side. All right, most of the ones that I talk to, because that's where I built, so they're contacting me to get it. You know, there's still great areas out here, you know, and they're close to the schools, so, I mean, there's a lot of things, I mean, they're, y'all are doing some great stuff, so, you know, give the check back.
What I'm getting at is from where we sit, you know, I'm not a builder, I don't know anything about building neighborhoods or any of this stuff. Where I sit, I'm going, what's five hundred bucks on building a house? When you're building a house.
Per house.
You know?
Well, it's definitely five hundred.
Different, you know, yeah. So, you know, is, is it the five hundred dollars, is it the five hundred, the two hundred, you know, the, all of those?
Yeah, it adds up, it adds up, and I would, I would say this, the, the, it's much easier now to get a going permit than it used to be. Nothing against anybody in the past, because I loved all those guys, but it's much easier now. The, you know, but, but it is, when, when you're not providing much of anything, like a five hundred dollar, you know, it's, you know, it's a little raw, because I'm paying a plumber to tie that end to that path that the developer put in, and then having to pay the city, you know, tribute to do it. You know, now, if the city provided it, and did the work, provided everything, it's perfectly understandable, that's a normal buyer seller transaction. But this is kind of a punitive, you know, a punitive arrangement, you know, from my point of view as a developer and builder. So, and it adds up, I mean, it does add up.
Because I, I mean, I agree completely with Mayor, I mean, I'm the same, as you've said several times, I mean, we need, we need people to stimulate city sales tax, county sales tax, all those things that are the money that we use to provide, to build it in a street.
Sure. And the, and the number one thing to solve infill issues is to have new development. Because if you have new developments, you have much more revenue potential coming in that helps you fill in. You know, areas, I, I have people all the time that want me to come over to the north side of Fort Smith and do the development, and I said, I would love to do that. But I'm not financially liable to do that, that's a legacy project, you have to be able to do some other things first, if you're going to do something like that. So in order to do that, you got to have people come down, you know, invest in your district, I mean, that's a lot of where I invest in the district.
Rocky, you said cost is part of it, you said difficulty here. And then that difficulty here is because we don't treat people the same, we, what is the difficulty?
No, I, I'll do this, I, I can, I can get a permit in ten minutes in City Fort Smith. I'd call, give them all the details, come and get them, and their permit's ready, assigned food, come out the door, all right? Now they school, okay, they, they school me. Down here, you stay home, I will say this, Hunter, Hunter's doing a good job, Hunter, where you at, there you are. The, the one thing that I say through gritted teeth is res check. Res check. Then we have to fill out our energy code stuff, where, and once again, I'm going to bring this, I'm going to bring it to the City Fort Smith deal, because they may need it. They have an energy code sticker that you have to fill out, and you put it on the electrical panel in our house, and you can go and look at that, and you can see what the builder has done in this house, and you can actually have it tested, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't comply to what the builder stated, then the builder's liable. And I actually like that better than filling out a res check form, which is useless, because nobody knows what they are, nobody knows how to read them. And it's, it's, it's two or three hours of making this thing worked out, so you can get a permit, and it's useless. But we have to do it, we have to do it, because that's your way of complying with the state energy code office. Whether it's if you fill a form out of this sticker out, put it on, it's been a homeowner benefits, because they know what they got.
I'll, I'll ask the stupid question, and maybe.
And it's not, y'all have been talking.
For years. Yeah, I know, well, I'm assuming, so, two, why do we do that? And then, two, how do we not do that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
How do we get to the sticker?
If you want to do.
Alice is in the weeds here.
Yeah, I think y'all have to, y'all have to have an ordinance, I think, or, I mean, the building code to do that, but I don't think it's that difficult to do. But it is, it, it's, it's the only thing, you give me the part first, and you give me a random permit, and it's to pass, it's just with, but that's no good.
These are the things that I need, we need to know, I mean, and I appreciate you, so we'll, we'll have a meeting tomorrow.
From the development.
I'm going to say we'll fix it tomorrow, if you want.
What, where are the difficulties from the development part?
Well, like I said.
Are they being given away or sure?
Yeah, that, right, and, and I would say this, that, that is a primary thing that, I was not involved in that directly. I built in four steals, but I was not part of that. But it's like a family deal, my dad got taken advantage of, so that really burns me up, that my father was taken advantage of. So, you know, you have a family where it's taken advantage, you take it more personally than you would, and it repleads yourself. So, you know, that's kind of one of those deals. And, and that is part of why I am not developed, because I was afraid, they were in a whole lot better position financially to do something, eat it and lose it, whether I am not in as good a position to do that, to eat it and lose it. So, and that is a technical term.
Talking to your dad at Stone Shire, I was being lost, I mean, it's a term. It was a little more than that, it was the treatment.
Sure.
Treated differently, and some people had favor over others.
I, I think that's part of, I mean, that's always politics, there's, there's always, there's always, there's people in Fort Smith that say that I get treated more, I will say this, I have a big mouth, and I always come in and I will complain a little bit more, and they don't, well, come and drop you continuously now, give you what you want, okay? I mean, I, I get that a lot, so. But, but anyway, so, but, I mean, there's potentially, there's potentially some of that, potentially some of that, but, you know, you know, to me, that doesn't bother me as much as, you know, if there's heat, if there's a reason to do the development, and the city is on board and excited to do something, then, you know, is willing to not do, treat anybody any more favorably, not to do something, you know, that's going to cost the taxpayer or anything, but to at least treat the developer like they're wanted, you know, that's, that's encouraging.
And I, I would, I would like to say one thing.
Buddy, would you mind coming to the mic, saying a service? Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Buddy always wants to learn, very strict driver. The thing I, I would like to say, and I appreciate Rocky, I built him this subdivision. And my son wanted to move to Greenwood. Yes, Flint, Flint boys, the main reason they want to move to Greenwood would be close to me. I had nothing to do with it, they wanted in Greenwood School System. At the time, we looked for a month, trying to find somewhere within the city limits of Greenwood to build him a house. People are going and buying houses for Mark and Walker, but we don't have anywhere to build them here. That's why they're going up there. So if you want to talk traffic, 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 go sit on Howard Hill Road, and look at all the cars coming from his subdivision to our school. You want better than traffic, let's build some subdivisions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Brian, you presented this number with the council's consideration, and I think an answer for this evening.
To get back to the item on our agenda.
Yes, sir.
That, uh, Sharpe should be the sub one here, hang on a second. That ordinance, three fifty-seven, that I referenced, amended ordinance, amending ordinances, one fifty-nine, one seventy, one ninety-four, two twenty-four, two thirty-six, two fifty-three, two seventy-six, and three fifty-four. So I would like to suggest, all of these ordinances be given back to the planning department, and maybe worked with the water department, or the water commission, to do what was said, that, that, you know, let's restructure these fees. And I'm fine with that, if it's, we actually do the work versus builders actually does the work, that makes sense to me. But is, that seems like the best approach at this point. What do those rates need to be? And all encompassed, you know, and the rate needs to factor in the thought of, you know, like A.C. has mentioned, you know, this growth funds, that thing. That's my suggestion.
All those ordinances are all involved around structure of the fees?
I have no idea. I think says that's amending all of those ordinances, then there's ordinance amending that ordinance, and, I mean, it's like this string of.
Well, I think, too, we have to look at the, the rebate carefully, because unfortunately, you know, Rocky's family, you know, suffered from that, you know, something was promised later on down the road and stuff, you know? And I don't know if it was a good demonstration or change or watch, you know, but it failed proof, you know, and I think.
I think if we have a fair fee structure, you don't need rebates.
Yeah, don't do any rebates, that's right.
Right. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
I don't know if you need a motion.
Yeah, I think all the fees, you know, sort of like that rebate, you know, is, like. Burning the hand worth two in the bush, you know, that same, that rebate, that's just, you know, put in the bush, and everyone, at least you don't have to get what you got, yeah.
So, so is that like you're wanting to go back, return these ordinances back to the planning commission, or the waste water commission? Let them look at it, come up with a fee structure that makes sense?
Come up with a fee structure that makes sense, bring that back in the ordinance, that repeals all.
The only thing I would say, and, I mean, that's your suggestion, if you want to make a motion, that's probably good, probably the best way to do it, I think, if you can get that on the vote. I would strongly suggest that this not take forever.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, we don't, I'm not saying next week, next month, that we, this needs to be looked at hard, done by these two commissions, and.
Not forever, but also not to be your reaction, because that'd give us some more trouble.
I agree.
We should have something in front of you all within two months, two months from this meeting, we should, we'll have something in front of y'all. You may have, we may have three options, A, B, C, or D, that you can pick from, different closing cons, we'll have something for you in two months.
For our April meeting.
Reasonable?
Yeah.
Less than each year?
I like the word fair.
Absolutely, again, so, it's almost like we have to keep reminding ourselves, and I'm not bad in here, you know, please don't think, think I am. We always kind of have to remind ourselves that we want to do this across the board. Absolutely, without a shadow of a doubt, that's a ministry flag. Absolutely, without a shadow of doubt, that's a ministry flag, that this is not just for two fifty-one, I'm sorry, East Village. This is going for it in my, in my, the way I think. This ought to be the way business is done in Greenwood, Arkansas, whatever, whatever we can, you guys can decide on. I mean, there's no way, and I know we can get down in the week with that discussion and talk about we did, or the water wastewater commission did, and I think council did too, on the other fee, the water fee was about, is it one house, is it two houses, where do you save, where do you do what you do? So all that has to be figured out without having to come back. And if Mr. Walker shows up, wants to build two houses, or the thing that he's done, uh, we don't have to go back through all that again. I mean, it's fair is fair. I mean, that'll be, we shouldn't even be discussing it if it's not fair across the board, and I can... Is that fair? I don't mind. Does that sound like I'm bad here, you guys? Yeah, yes. But absolutely, it's gotta be crossable. So, you wanna put that on the motion to...
I'll make that all a motion.
Okay, that's what he says? You have something, you can all vote. I'll say that, put down all that stuff.
Make all that into a motion, Charlie?
Yes. You would like to have all of the TAP ordinances rounded up and reviewed, how to put the fees together.
Singular replacement.
And reveal all of those.
Only, this is a part, and I want to clarify, or so many parts of the industry that I was talking about fees, you know, for... We wanna go down there and do something, or something that's good, that's not tech, that's not fee structure. Yeah, so I think two months is a good, and I know that's probably not...
Yeah, I mean, these ordinances may very well cover topics that no one needed to discuss, so we're not trying to rule out everything right out there.
Well, I do know that the water commission got rid of everything that was in ordinance that was like policy related. It could have been policies, and now only fees are supposed to be under ordinance. So, that'd be the time to load out and make a policy. And just do...
So they already consolidated all the policies?
Yes. Yes, yeah, the fees are bound off, they have to be by ordinance.
But, uh, I guess also, just from what I heard, and I think that did marry is that, you know, our building permit process needs to look like, apparently, be looked at. And if, I like Portsmouth can have a simplified version, I think it's really...
Absolutely, but he's shaking, he knows I'm coming, they know I'm coming to their, or they're coming to my office tomorrow and have a discussion about it. We may, we may be calling you, anybody who wants to chime in on that, to help us be better. And I appreciate, I think, I think it is, you said it a while ago.
Can we go online with our permit applications? Can they go online and...
Yes.
Apply?
And I would like to add with that coming up there in response to Rocky, I took out a building permit today. I was in and out of the office in thirty minutes.
There you go.
So it's much better. I don't get to call ahead, Rocky, but I'm not running.
And you're not at school yet? All right, we have motion in a second, I believe, from Miss Brian.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I think some progress was made there. I know it seemed to take a long time for all of you that weren't here for that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Walker, again, and Mr. Brian, Mr. Walker, everybody. Okay, uh... And we were number three, is that right? Police Resolution, is that right? Did we remove this? Number three is tabled or removed? Tabled. He's going for a revision. Number four is parks, uh, ordinance adopting... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we need to get rid of the table.
Yep.
Motion second.
I can take care of myself.
Working out, thank you. Number four is parks, ordinance adopting parks regulation, third reading, Mr. Walker.
Counsel, thank you. I bring to you again the regulations for parks operation. Just sitting back here, Charlotte and I, we're talking about, there's a couple of mistakes that we need to fix. One being, um, that page nine refers to, um, section, uh, two dash five, which we have, that it's just been removed. We can't refer to it, it's been removed. Um, so we're gonna have to do a little repair work. It just needs to say two dash three, instead of that's five. These are rough, maybe there's corrections, a lot of these strikeouts and shady words.
I'm all about simplicity.
Yeah, all that. And, uh, so if it's the way my classes, that's all we know this is.
You don't wanna be in trouble with that.
Well, reference is two point eight.
It's not too, too bad, yeah.
Where did I talk about the fee?
Let's have a little, um, take a talk about it.
K dash two, page nine?
I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking, eight dash two, page nine, it was this, uh, five hundred dollar fee violation of section two dash eight. What's a five hundred dollar fee for violating what?
What do we refer back to?
Uh, tree, shrubbery, lawn, scum, anything. That's what two, two five is. Two eight was just says trash litter, I guess. See, that was compressed even a little.
That was combined with the F three, is that right? Do we wanna say anything in section two with all of the documents? Any violation of park property?
I don't, I'm not...
You want to say, it's a violation of ordinance, so it'd be section?
Yeah, this is two, violation six, the whole thing.
Yeah, this is section two.
So which one is gonna be, five hundred or a thousand?
Five hundred is great, seven, yes.
And a thousand dollars for a tree?
One of those for doing something, we never cut down trees.
So, as, so, say, uh, where are section five, you know, is going to be removed, just say per section two?
So it's a five hundred dollar fee for violation of anything in section two. Except a thousand dollars per tree. And each separate fence of two point three.
Yes. It has to be just two three.
And... One hundred dollars for any other violation of any of those.
So...
Does that make sense? Yeah.
So, section two dash five should be section two dash three.
Yes.
And section two dash eight should just be section two.
All right, merge, and what do you want?
Thought we had pelicans on the street out today.
That one?
Pelicans.
Were they carrying a...
I don't know.
Storm, hey. Same family, is it? I have motion second to put on, third reading, how only? The changes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
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 An ordinance adopting regulations for conduct and hover parks and city agreement on its own, and this will be posted, and then...
Thank you, thank you, appreciate you. Number five is planning, ordinance to rezone, two twenty-three South Coker, from R one to R three, Bergring.
I can honestly put that on the third reading and title it second.
And motion second. Bergring, title.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
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 An ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen dash C roundabout for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, amending the official zoning map of the city of Greenwood.
Thank you. You barely got to the podium on this. Thank you again, Mr. Walker. Hey, I'm sorry, just a little unprofessional here. Bean Place?
Bean Place.
When, when can this, when's this going to happen?
Well, we got the demo permit, Hunter sent that to us.
Was that easy?
Online.
Was that easy?
And we paid for it.
How many, how many minutes?
So, I don't know how many minutes, but it was expedition.
Okay.
Just say that, just say that. So, no, that's great. So, the notes, we will, we will tear the structure down here in the next three or four weeks. And then we're getting our things together, and we'll be back.
All right.
Yeah, we're going forward.
Very proud of you.
All right, thank y'all.
Next one is new business, number six, planning, ordinance for redistricting of city wards due to twenty twenty census. Mr. Bell.
Counsel, um, before we get into this, I'd like to give you a little backstory on this. Uh, there have been some social media claims and some other, uh, things put out there that, uh, someone out of City Hall, or myself, or painting, or whatever, was about to get into the gamble, and it went on and on and on. There's no conspiracy here. Uh, tell you how this kind of started, and, and, and Mr. Darian came back and he got, um, Mr. Darian got a phone call from, I think, the Arkansas GIS, uh, asking when we were going to do our redistricting. And Charlotte called me into her office and said, what do you think about this? And I said, well, Charlotte, I said, I, I don't, with the small amount of people that we got in our census, I don't feel that it's necessary. And we both shook our head and said, we're not gonna worry about it. So, this went on for a week, or maybe longer, and then Charlotte gets another phone call from another state agency.
The election commission is now...
Says, you will do this redistricting. So, we got our heads...
No, they said, you need to review it. You need to have someone review it.
Okay. And... So, we looked at each other and said, you wanna do this? And I said, I don't wanna do this, I don't wanna do this. I said, you know, I've, I've done this before, and I don't have the, the numbers that it takes to do the redistricting. I don't have the mapping capabilities, I don't have the number. And, and so, we said, well, let's call in an expert. And so, we called the, uh, West Arkansas plan, and got over Tina, and she says, this is what I do. And said, would you please look at this and let us know what, what we need to do?
Well, we said, do we even need to do it?
Whether we need to do it or whatever.
Yeah.
And so, we handed it off to Tina with, with, uh, West Arkansas plan, and she took it, and she got the expertise. And so, I'm gonna turn this over to Tina, and she can kind of explain to you from, from the point where I said, please help us to where we are tonight. Tina? You have a statement?
This is Tina Thompson.
Yes.
Tina Thompson, and she's from Southland Development. So, picking up where I left off, um, we took your initial, um, your existing, uh, city ward boundary, and we overlaid the, uh, twenty twenty, uh, population, and calculated the population for each ward to see if those numbers came out within the five percent, um, that you're allowed to de- deviate from, um, being equal across the board. Um, they did not. The other, uh, issue that we found was, um, that your ward three was split, it was not continued. And, um, the guidance that we received from the Arkansas municipal league was that if someone wanted to challenge that not being contiguous and take it to court, they would win, and the city would lose. So that was the biggest thing, was we needed to get, um, ward three, uh, where it was contiguous, not split. So, in doing so, I did come down, and I met with Charlotte and Sunny, and I said, I got this problem. I can't figure out what to do with this, um, because everything that I was seeing was that we were going to have to, um, move one of the council members out of their ward into another ward. So, um, I can figure out how to, how to make that work. So, that is the, the first map that you will see in, in this, that is what we came up with. That moved one of your council members out of their ward into another. The second map that says option two on it was a map where, um, we just went back, and we put that, that council member back in their ward, and it shows that the numbers do not work. So, the third option was work on state, and these numbers do work. It just looks a little odd, um, with your, uh, ward two. You've got that one little teeth going off, um, down Center Street, and then runs south up of there. So, those are your options, and I'll leave it up to you.
What, what, where's our current? Do we have a...
Uh, I have a big map showing your current.
How old are you, sir?
You have to figure out...
We'll, I mean, we'll tell you while we're back.
All right.
I'm pretty sure I'm gonna... No, I'll just put it where you need it. I can walk around there, but it's a little... I'll just check my emails while I was talking.
Well, other than that, there's five percent rules of what they're located.
Tina, what is, where is the, like, is it a five percent variance, or like, is it, you need to be within, that's like...
Also, that, yeah, and that, that, what that makes is, so your five percent variance would be that all of your populations between wards need to be within a hundred and fifty-seven plus or minus. Um...
That's our five percent, a hundred and fifty-seven.
Yes, on, on, for the city of Greenwood. So this is your, your existing, um, and here's your split. So, this had to be moved into, to Ward Two. When we did that, it made Ward Two heavy, and Ward Three light. So, we had to find, you know, what, what can we do to, to even these numbers out? Ward One was not so bad, it was, it was pretty good, pretty close. We did have to make a few changes just to, to get it evened out, but this is your existing, and those are your, well, option two is not an option. It doesn't, the numbers don't work. Option Three and One are, are your options, and depending on which one you want, I will get the demographics reports and maps to Charlotte. It has to be fine.
Option One is the cleanest option. The numbers work, but it does disenfranchise the council member. Option Two is the, option Two does not work at all, because the numbers are not close enough. Option Three works, it doesn't disenfranchise the council, any council members, but it does, doesn't look, it looks a little wonky with that J, with the Greenwood J, with the four shells. It doesn't look as clean as option One. But it's legal?
It is legal. It is contiguous with, what is that, Ward Two? So, it is, it is legal.
So, option One is legal and fair. Late, option One is legal and cleaner looking. But option Three is not as clean looking, but it's more fair to existing council member.
And one other note to make is that the deadline to get all of this done, filed with the clerk, and exempt to the state is February twenty-second. So, we are running out of time.
Is that, is that in that statute, that it's not, that it's not gonna start moving?
That February twenty-second date is to allow the county clerk time to get their records updated before your, your election, and by the following period. So, it's filing this? Well, your filing deadline, I think, is March, April? No, May. I think it's May. And so, you're allowing the parks office.
My filing date on the, the legal official?
No. No, we're talking about filing, this has to be filed.
Oh, okay. Now, you said file, I mean, has to be filed, and that's so she can get.
So, she has time to get her records updated, so that whenever people go to vote, they get the ride out. It's all connected, like, a lot of them, and, and keep in mind too, you know, it may seem like we're giving her a lot of time, but she's got all the other cities to do and stuff, and the county.
So, who, this reflects option One?
Yeah.
So, if we were to choose option Three, the census blocks would have to be corrected?
Yeah, it has different demographic, I know, I have.
She's got that, she has to sit it too.
Oh, this is census blocks.
Yes, so what you have there, what you have here reflects option One, yes. So, everything from the first two pages on this, Exhibit A, would be replaced with updated demographics that reflect the boundaries in option Three. If that was option One, then we would have to replace that, plus replace the map, which you have to add.
The ordinance, it's pretty much like that. Just those attachments we're gonna change in the map. Yes, because. Unless you want to have it specially, well, there's still need.
Well, the good thing is everybody in the city votes on everybody, the council's on all sides, except for, they don't do their ballots, so.
And I say that, again, this is just a, I guess, does it happen every census, or does it happen?
It's every ten years. You have to, you have to look at your, your city ward boundaries and the population.
We did this ten years ago.
And unfortunately, I know you have a lot of road coming out, you know, in Ward Three, we can't look at that right now, we have to go by what the census numbers show now. Another thing that was causing issue with this is you have some very large, geographically large census blocks, and you cannot split a census block in order to create your, your ward boundaries, and have to follow, and have to take the entire census block.
So, they're building this area out there at two hundred and fifty homes, which is gonna change the balance of all of this.
That you're not.
In that field. But we don't have to address that until the next census, right?
Ten years.
Y'all got ten years to fill that up?
We hope to do it before then.
Of course, I'd say that, well, Ward One could be altered over the next ten years, given the bypass. So, I'm just wondering what that's, what that's gonna spawn. But I like the idea that, that, yes, as far as wards, you know, if it doesn't impact anybody, everybody, especially me, doesn't impact me, as opposed.
To what do you?
And I'm thinking that, you know, as the city grows, or like a room, do you have more dog legs like we had in Ward One, and now in Ward Two? Because like, stand up, you said census blocks, they have to be done a certain way.
And if you can, if you look on, on this map, I'll be giving examples. This? This is all one census block. And you cannot split it. So, in option Three, I think it came down and took in this piece here. So, we weren't splitting this block, but if we were to take this block and put it here, we would have had to have taken all of these as well.
And I guess that's what we really don't see that goes on here, is the census blocks, you know, and how they're shaped and stuff, and then that goes along with it.
And, and you live in a really large census block as well.
Tina, does anybody else have to approve this once the council?
Once, once the council approves it now, the county clerk does not have to approve it, no one really has to approve it. The, the biggest issue that needed to be fixed was that, that Ward Three would not be a contiguous.
It just seems to me like the last time we did this, the election commission had a lot of input in there about the, the way that it was split.
And they're not really, that, that's not really their, their place.
How did this made it through before with that split like that?
I can't tell you, I wouldn't know. We didn't have one, but they did the last time.
Now, like I said, the election commission did a whole lot of that. I remember going up there and meeting with them, and taking maps, and, and, you know, they had all the, the numbers then, and so, we just kinda remembered what they, they told us, and, you know, that's the truth, and that's why I was asking you if it had to go back through there, because they, they were a little particular about what they.
It, it doesn't lie, and, and, again, like I said, the guidance that we got from the Art B Municipal League was, you know, you gotta, you gotta fix that split.
The lack of being continuous. So, is every municipality, many of areas, whatever it's named, using the election commission?
Not all of it. Some of them did have to do anything with theirs. The ones that did, I believe, we've done this for all.
Is there any progress that you have, or it's just a matter of?
Just a matter of how, I mean, the, the numbers work on either one. The numbers on option One are a little closer than option Three, but there's, option Three is still within that five percent.
Nothing's wrong.
So, we only have one option unless somebody wants to take AC out.
Or Maryland.
What does it pick up?
So, the red one's possible.
I'd like to work with you about option Three.
Ms. Taylor?
I second it.
Make sure you know. I'm sorry.
You're, you're also, such the census blocks, throughout the whole course and stuff.
Right. Is that that, that's a basis?
Mm-hmm.
That's a three through?
Yeah, this is to prove. Let the ordinance on City Board three be titled only with option Three map and option Three demographics. That's what you think.
And I second it there.
It's related to it.
Yes.
Yes, guys. Would you have any further?
Not really, I was, got to side trade. Are you all okay, or do you want? Okay.
I just quit listening.
Okay.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
That's unanimous, and I'll read. An ordinance redistricting wards within the city limits of the Greenwood Ward, to prevent emergency, if we're out of business.
Thank you, thank you, and sorry you had to.
We have more.
Sorry. Sorry. Yes, yes. Sorry, thank you anyway.
That motion can be waived, second, third, or even?
Second.
The motion's second.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion adopt ordinance, second. The motion's second to adopt.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Here?
I have. Motion's second to.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, thank you, Ms. McKenna.
It's not off.
Obviously, sorry, I'm thanking Ms. McKenna before, it's time to thank you, but thank you too. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Okay, number seven, resolution authorizing submission of ACEP grant application. You wanna touch on it before she comes up? Danielle, no? Come right up, ma'am.
You want me to come up, or?
Tracy, why don't you come up, Danielle, and give us a little, I'll make you sit here a little longer. Seems, or Tracy, I keep getting their names.
Okay, so I need this, I brought this before council back in December of twenty twenty, and I believe that we tabled it due to the next member on the agenda. And what this is, is I have to have council's approval to apply for this grant, and this grant would be used to help with Landisburg, the new senior center, and can be granted up to three hundred thousand dollars.
So, yes, so we reached out, or Danielle reached out to Wapah Diddy, because we landed on those folks for a lot these days, right? And Ms. Tracy, McKenna's here to touch on this a little bit. You happy, right?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Are y'all familiar, y'all remember this last, was it last year?
It was December of twenty twenty, I believe, is when I brought it up before. Everything was okay, except for that excessive force. We tangled it, and we, we have fixed it since then with Chiefs.
Yeah, it's kind of, we gotta get these two back, not necessarily backwards, and if you wanted the Chiefs, so Chief came in today, and the three of us sitting on, Danielle and Chief, and I talked about the resolution, and there was a little question online, or the part of, the resolution that is part of this package, if you will, and we amended that resolution, and to make the chief good.
Yes, there's like seven, eight, and nine all go together with this grant. I have to have all, both three resolutions, and no one press or part.
Right. So, I don't know, you're looking at whatever questions you can come up with, we got a lady here. Angela?
What this is, is this is a community development block grant that's administered by the state of Arkansas, but it retains its federal designation as federal HUD funds, so all the federal regulations have to be followed, and so those resolutions are actually part of the federal HUD package that goes along with the community development block grant funds.
So, you brought this to us last time, and we had all those resolutions, and we all called, defended that.
Yes.
Yes. But also, at that time, there was also some confusion about what the actual project would be. I, initially, when Danielle and I first started discussing that, you know, back in twenty twenty, I thought we were looking more at remodeling the current senior center, and so then it, we kind of evolved that, well, we actually need a new senior center, but there weren't really good plans in place for that yet, so we kind of just put the whole thing on hold for all of twenty twenty-one. That's why it's taken us, that's why it's been so long, why it's come back, is because the project has kind of changed, but evolved, and progressed to the point where the city seems to be more ready to afford with the construction of a new senior center. And so, I've.
Why we're above that property.
So, that, that's why it's kind of been so long since you first saw it, and now, not, you know, not just the basis of what was in the resolutions.
So, this is a piece of the puzzle that needs to be put together, and then again, it's up two, three hundred thousand, which won't buy building to building, obviously, but it's a piece of getting some funding toward that project, which the other piece, if you will, is the Parks Commission agreeing or approving the usage of the, whatever acreage we need, or the center needs in Bell Park, the newly acquired nineteen acres in Bell Park. I hired M A H G.
To come up with the sound.
Yeah, his name.
Travis Bartlett.
Travis Bartlett has come, has already been down for one meeting. I'm just telling him a little bit of the process where we are, and why we're trying to get this back, get it going, so we can apply for this grant. Travis has come down and talked to Wendy, myself, Danielle, Lisa Moore, the rent center, her boss, who's been looking forward to meet, and I had, I invited four to five folks that utilize that facility to come over to be a part of the discussion of what we, what we're looking for at the moment, so.
And we'll hopefully be meeting later this week, too.
Right.
What's our matching?
There is, so the grant itself is technically a non-matching grant, but I've never seen one funded that didn't include some sort of match. Obviously, with this project, if you build anything lately, three hundred thousand is not going to build a complete, a senior center. So, the city is gonna, I mean, wherever those other funds come from, that's, that's a bunch of y'all that might be.
And is that, and we have talked about it a whole lot, is, is that possible to be in kind also, or?
Uh, yes.
So that.
We just need to know that ahead of time, and it has to be all.
Say we're under C, is there a time limit to use it?
Well, if, I mean, the, so the first chance we'll have to apply will be an April first deadline, and if, if we're not able to show that all of the other funding is in place at that time, it, I mean, it, it has a very low chance of being funded, but this, you know, this kind of starts the process, I mean.
So, if we don't have a plan by April the first, with the, you know, with money set aside, our chances of getting it approved are really bad.
I'd have to apply again in October. But then there, you know, there will be subsequent applications, and.
So, there's probably no way we make it by April, or we could make it by, by October. By getting a plan, getting some costs associated with that.
Yeah, I think right now, what I believe, what Danielle and I discussed is for the city to get us some sort of floor plan, site plan put together, because that's, then from that, the architect can put together a budget, and Danielle can really look at, you know, what, what that other funding might look like.
You started working with Travis Bartlett, he may have.
Yes. Yes.
Just, it's just.
We've got one meeting.
Well, I mean, I've been working on it for about a month or so now, we're getting a couple letters of work from uh, Senator Congress and things like that.
There's no way we'd have that by April.
He seems to think he can.
As far as the plan?
Yeah, Travis.
You got a literal floor plan or?
Plan with with some funding associated.
Well, oh, coughs actually.
He said he could, yeah, when we had our last meeting.
They're not, they're not shy about giving you. Come up with it all pretty quick. And the key is knowing what is needed, and that's the reason I brought in, obviously, Lisa and Danielle always agree on that, and to see what is needed. And who who knows better than the people that have been running it?
What does excessive force by our law, we have to do any support?
I'll tell you exactly why. The current government can't control that even on a city, but they can control purse grants, so put this number in control.
Kind of battery. So we can have a real liberal definition of nonviolent civil rights administration. I mean, it says you can't do anything that's nonviolent.
Well, I, I mean, when I discussed with parents, who's deciding what's this or what's that, and that's why we're allowed to put that for the back bar, so this is the reason you prefer to.
And we also, just for information, there's also several towns and counties who also who have already approved this exact resolution in order to receive the grant money.
This ties into the grant money?
No, only the only the CDVG ones. This is only tied to community development law grant funds.
Did you adopt duty? Really? So, uh, Chief, are you. I'm going to work with her to turn it back to our council.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I kind of want to do this in in sections, and I'll try to, you know, if the if the Chief, if Dawson is okay with this one, uh, I make a motion to be approved. The resolution is starting to go. No, so, I think they're all.
I mean, it isn't, well, we're on, we're on, I'm sorry, I don't know, but we're on, I don't know, that's all we're considering, right? Yeah, it's seven is the resolution that just authorizes the mayor's to submit the application. I mean, it's close, they're all related. Seven and nine are related, but they're.
And I'm assuming they all have got the same results.
Yeah, you can't do like two without the other, they all break out. Yeah, they all, they all have, all three have to be passed in order to submit an application for the grant money.
So that's why I think, you know, me, seven, and eight should kind of first, because.
So we need to do seven, I make the motion, we adopt the resolution, whatever number this is, I don't know, seven.
On the resolution authorizing submission of ACEDP grant application?
Yes.
Have a motion, and second.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Danielle.
Yes.
And Terry.
Yes.
So the number eight is the.
I second, I see a motion.
You already did that motion?
Yes.
I didn't hear, sorry, ask first, no, motion is second.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Danielle.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes.
We have four guesses.
Uh.
Yes. On eight.
Motion passive, authority.
Number nine, resolution of offices and participation. Now, uh, on this participation plan, uh, do we have to have these task forces established before we proceed?
Do what?
Well, I see here that says, you know, under section A, section three, it says that, you know, they all should be accorded an opportunity to serve on task forces, so you have to have a task force in place.
I mean, if you have a test, you have those things in place, then.
Then they would.
They have to.
We get a hankering to have a task force.
And then for the the projects, you know, that we go, uh, once we pass this, I mean, does the council still provide with each project that we're going to be pursuing, or does the mayor just has that sole expression?
No, I'll, no, I mean, any CDVG project is going to have to have that same resolution that you pass as number seven. And then, um, I mean, as as far as other grants go, I mean, they would always, almost always have a resolution attached from the city council.
You still don't have anything in the budget for it, so it's still got to be the cap.
Yeah, absolutely, my intention for this grant is solely for the purpose of building a senior citizens center. There is not a hidden gem. And so you have to have two meetings prior to.
You have to have one meeting prior to the application, which we actually advertised at six o'clock and we faced and had no participation. Um, and then we will have, if the project gets funded, then you have to have a second project to update the progress of the project, which we typically do after the project is already complete. And if we go over the budget and, you know, public project was for the community and.
And by the way, your organization helps us with grants, right? That's what you're doing here.
Oh, yes.
So we got.
She got the right the whole time. Yeah, she just completed the entire application, and I am just getting my part in it and the mayor's part in it, just giving her the information that she has requested, such as letters of support, how much the city has contributed to the senior center, such as the utilities for workers, access to buildings.
And have we stated how much money this all could be worth to us?
Right.
The grants are three hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's always been three hundred thousand, it's up to three hundred.
Yeah, that's, and it used to only be two hundred thousand.
I make a motion.
I think my. Sir. The motion is second.
Thanks, Tim.
We have any?
I have any.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Brown.
Well, I was, uh, one thing here under section D, where it says that you make all comments, questions, and concerns to Greenwood. Is that Green Greenwood City or is that the Greenwood City Council? It says, you know, at the next reading of Greenwood, but it still doesn't, you know, this was paid there, I wonder if that could be put in there, Greenwood City Council.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, regular meeting of the city, sorry, I saw. Oh, it's in the.
You see, we have that in there, I'll, I'll.
You want to say city of Greenwood, wherever it says Greenwood?
Well, not necessarily, definitely, y'all know the last.
Yeah.
That's because it's a meeting.
We're talking about, I mean, at the Greenwood, there's these places, meeting at Greenwood. Concerns to Greenwood in the next regular meeting of Greenwood. You want to say city. And it's a yes out of the ground. Yes, with that.
Ms. Danielle.
Yes.
That one's here.
Thank you, gentlemen, um. Thank you, Danielle, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McKenna, thank you very much, and thank you, Wapah Diddy, as a whole. Number eleven is ordinance revealing replacing ordinance sixteen, that's. Sorry, I'm just seeing the. Ten, what I said, eleven, resolution to amend personal policy handbook adding Juneteenth to list of city holidays.
How many paid city holidays do we currently have?
Fifteen with a birthday.
Thirteen plus a birthday?
Well.
Already done this last year.
Y'all wanted to tell them.
Thirteen dollar. Bid.
I'll, I'll send to people for the birthday for this one.
So.
Oh, I never heard of that.
Uh-uh, no, I think that's our.
Certainly said, it might not have been voted for.
Yeah, you might have said, definitely not.
Danielle, did you ever propose that? I'm so sorry. To get rid of the birthday and.
No, I didn't say that.
I am not.
Before.
For the people here, try to take away hope. That would not go well with my position.
Right. What's the reason it's a federal holiday?
It's a federal holiday.
Federal holiday.
You do not have to, if you would check with municipal league, it's not a have to, it is a federal holiday.
What if us? What if we changed our policy to say we had thirteen official holidays and you could pick and choose the ones you want?
We can't.
My question would be Wapah Diddy.
Look up the party, it's our A talk.
So, well, that's a great idea, that that would not work out with as many employees as we have. We'd have to be keeping track of of Jojo picks Fourth of July, but he doesn't want Thanksgiving, I mean, we just, we just couldn't do that.
And John, you always know a good boy.
Okay, I'm just picking a name, just hang on, cue me. Um, so I did a little research, and pretty much every town in the state of Arkansas is adopting CDVG into their budget this year. Um, like I said, you do not have to take it, although I'm sure employees would be grateful for another paid day off. Uh, but municipal league had presented it to us and stated that we should have council approve whether or not we want to do that.
So is the only holiday that we do have that's.
The only holiday that we do not observe here is Columbus Day, uh, because we do give employees their birthday off, but that was decided a very, very long time ago before. Well, we get Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and then we get Thanksgiving Day and the day after.
Christmas Eve is not a federal holiday?
No.
So I guess there are the birthday, Christmas Eve, and the day after Thanksgiving are the three that are archer, that are not federal holidays.
Right.
So why can't we just tell them, like, you either have Christmas Eve or Juneteenth, let them choose?
That would cause the other one conflicts, I don't think that would work.
Can I ask a question? Why would we not just recognize a federal holiday, be done with it?
That's why we just.
Well, if we don't recognize. This is a federal holiday.
Yeah, we just only recognize.
With the others. Because you have good employees and they appreciate the fact that you are recognizing holidays and and those holiday things. I don't understand why this is different than any other. Because we don't recognize Columbus Day, apparently.
Like, I don't, I don't know, I do not know what that was long before.
Thank you.
Would this cost the end for money to the city if they would? Would this cost the end for money? Would it be, is there other Sunday, right?
Not working, it comes up today straight up.
Athletes are on their.
So this is not only, is it just for on you?
I I do not have access to that.
Because if this is just for on you.
If we were just.
If you're in.
Yes, you're not.
I see you recognize a couple sections, it's non-uniformed and uniformed.
Okay, so you're, they're paid, they're not, yeah, but they don't necessarily get that day off because they're all.
Right, that's, that's what I want to.
Saying we recognize a federal holiday.
That's right, that's why I'm putting it out, because I want you to.
Washington's Birthday. American Indian Heritage Day.
We don't have that one.
In Juneteenth, that are not on our, our, our list. If you say we're recognizing federal holidays across the board, you just have four holidays.
No, not.
No, he didn't say that.
We're not, I'm just pointing out. I'm not saying you're taking away the ones we get off, like the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, whatever.
Yeah, I'm saying, we'll just take off Christmas Eve, we'll take off.
I don't think that we should, I don't think we should take away, I mean, that's just my thought, especially with morale, I don't think that that's a.
Did the parent just gave up their body?
And I completely appreciate that, I really, really do, but I just don't feel, I mean, that's one of the huge benefits of working for, I'm just speaking out, I'm very respectful. That's one of the huge benefits of working for the city are the paid holidays off. Uh, I know a lot of us have family and children, um, and having Christmas Eve and Christmas Day off is is wonderful to have, most companies do offer that. Um, I know a lot of farmers think they do have to work it, but they just work until noon, you know, I mean, I don't feel if we take away employees' holidays where they haven't for all these many years, I don't think that that's going to help morale at all. I think we're going to have a lot of upset employees, and we want happy, productive employees, not ones who are angry because they've taken away things that they had for years and years.
Exactly, so say they're really wanting to celebrate Juneteenth. And so next month, they're going to really be wanting to celebrate American Heritage Day, Indian Heritage Day, because we got a lot of people that have American.
We do, yes, I, like I said, I'm just ready for Juneteenth to you because it was recognized recently as a federal holiday, and municipal league suggested that we do that.
Well, prior to this being declared a federal holiday, I worked in Texas where it was originally started, and, uh, and the corporation I worked for said, you know, you have a personal holiday, you know, those that want to take it on Juneteenth, take it on Juneteenth, those that don't, you know, they can use their personal holidays. Now, there might be totally different announcements.
Which is what we do, birthday, basically, I mean, basically, like.
Yeah, our employees can take that anytime during the year, as long as they take it for the the next birthday.
They can take it on Juneteenth?
They could, if they want to.
So right now, there's twelve and a birthday.
So thirteen total. Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, come up, would please.
I can say this, and then send back there, municipal league thinks that you guys should probably approve Juneteenth for a reason, and I think you probably need to think about that for just a couple seconds.
I think it's important at this time juncture, not only this meeting, but to take everything to be a positive place to live. That's not it. And I think with accepting this as a holiday here to be positive, by rejecting it, it's very.
I'll all for it, Chip, I'm going to take away the birthday, totally thirteen's good.
You're not really accepting it by that, you're replacing it, you're just making it. In my opinion, that's not an acceptance, that's. Well, I think it's still being observed, so what's what I want to do is observe it.
It's being observed, June nineteenth, I guess it floats if it happens well on Saturday or Sunday. Then it goes to, let's see if it mentions that anywhere.
It doesn't, it it mentions it in our personal policy handbook. And that's what this is doing.
I'll follow that up with a question, do we want to be perceived as a positive place to live here in Arkansas?
Absolutely.
Here, for all.
Absolutely. Some nature.
I, 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 I want to be positive, but I, I don't, I'm not sure I'm tying positive and negative to that.
No, I think you'll, I think you'll figure the perception.
On your way home.
Definitely.
It's a single day in the scheme of the thing. City business.
Is that thirteen days off or years and years? Well, I just heard.
You what?
The employees that have thirteen days off are years and years and years, is what I heard.
So that's correct.
That's just what the HR said.
Right. This would be fourteen, correct. If you added one. I make a motion without resolution. I have a motion to adopt. I'll say it.
Leaving the birthday then?
As is. The motion, the motion to adopt in a second.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Hello.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
And Terry.
Yes.
Has a thought of doing.
Thank you. Moving on to, I think, where I was going to go, or at least I thought, number eleven, uh.
Fourteen. They got the fourteen.
Orders repealing and replacing ordinance sixteen dash ten and ordinance twenty-one dash three establishing air and business protected. Mine is the first one, please. This is the process that we are required to do for all western businesses.
We said that we were going to adjust or edit this so that the salary is not changing every time, nothing. Close more than their type changes. There are the maximums or salary for everyone. And that's taking that out of this, so... Because that changes. With your possible information. And that's what this is doing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion with that.
Second.
Put it on first reading?
First reading. They have a motion, second person. Time only first reading?
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance sixteen dash ten and ordinance twenty-one dash zero two establishing expected workout activities for the elected mayor of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, for the...
This is not an emergency passage, is it?
Well, it is.
Yes, it is.
It needs to be, because we are... We have... We are citizens. How can you...
Claiming that in the House of Representatives. A motion, second. Or a motion... Second.
Baker?
Wait a second, yes.
What, Brown?
Yes.
Well, so, if you read the power, you...
Oh, no. All just the title.
Second. Yes.
They're going to like you.
Yeah. Yes.
My motion to adopt.
Second. Motion, second to adopt.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
May I ask you to enact the emergency clause?
Second.
Second. Motion, second, to enact first.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I remember twelve is exactly the same, except it's for the city clerk treasures, salary and benefits.
Motion, we adopt... We have some first reading, but not alone.
Second. Motion, second. First reading, not alone.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Dale?
Yes.
Teney?
Yes.
Danahus? All right, how? An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance sixteen dash zero nine and ordinance twenty-one dash zero two establishing salary, expected work hours and benefits for the elected city clerk for the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, regarding the emergency calls for other purposes.
Motion, wait, second, third reading?
Second.
Motion, second, wait, second, third reading?
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Dale?
Yes.
I have a motion to adopt the orders.
Second.
Motion, second to adopt.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
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 My motion, we enact emergency clause.
Second. Motion, second to enact emergency clause.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Number thirteen, exact same, except it is for establishing city journey benefits.
My motion, I put this on... First reading, but not alone.
Second. Motion to...
The only difference that it's... The only difference is it still does have... This is the city clerk, I'm... City attorney. It still does have another ordinance that we are amending. And I believe it's because... An ordinance has to have... Can't deal with more than one subject. Oh, right. Mike?
Yes.
And one of these is about the expected work hours and all of that. Other one is about his duties.
They're separate.
They are separate. I mean...
So, can we not leave ordinance four forty-eight alone?
We have to amend it because in it, there's a salary portion in there.
I would say amend it.
Yeah, that's section seven on the old ordinance four forty-eight.
This goes back to Cindy Julian. How long you been here, Mike?
I've been... Long time.
I've been partying here a while.
And what I did was adjust... I did adjust section seven in there on section two of the ordinance. I referenced section seven. Hereby amended to read, and then I reworded it to where it doesn't have to have a dollar amount in there, and it directs it to the city budget. So, whatever you put in the budget. That's why all those dollars are... Whatever's in the budget for us is what we pay. Right.
So, can we deal with the first one first?
No. This first one amends that. And that's why I said there's two ordinances here to deal with. One's getting amended and not for deal, but replaced. But it's because it's a different subject. It's because of the work duties.
We're getting rid of two ordinances and then amending four forty-eight. Is that right? We're getting rid of twenty-nine thirty?
Yes.
And twenty-one dash four, amending four forty-eight.
Yes.
And so, you're saying on section seven, it's going to be paid per budgeted amount?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you can see on section two of that prime ordinance on... Martin? Not four forty-eight, this one. That will read. Section two explains in there that the annual adopted budget shall be full compensation for all the five... So, in other words, it was a little different than mine here, because he's got this extra ordinance, four forty-eight, according to his duties, and had a salary section. And I had to amend that by removing that salary and incorporating that directing it over to the budget. You understand how that is?
Why not review four forty-eight?
Because it's a different... It's a different ordinance dealing with the duties and by law...
Well, we are... I thought we had another one that did the duties of Roger down there.
Well, that's this one. And when we passed the one that Roger did, we kept four forty-eight. And I asked Mike then, why can't we not just lend four forty-eight into here? And he said... I mean, I asked him at a meeting, and he said, no, it doesn't need to be amended.
There's another one besides four forty-eight, right? The one you did, Roger? It's after four forty-eight.
Right. And that's the one... That's ordinance number twenty oh three. That's the one we're repealing and replacing here. And there was another one because it raised his salary again the following year. Because we had to, because the salary was in this, or the minimum maximum was. See, that's what it's caused, having to do this ordinance every time dollars change. And that's what we're correcting. That's why we're doing this.
Correct.
What you have to do. Right. The duties are still listed. Now, I thought we could bring four forty-eight back into the ordinance, but maybe not. Because I do know, like I said, maybe the duties are a different subject than this.
What's right, I did.
I'm going to try to...
I can hear.
Is there any motions in store?
There's not... Not a way. But this part of having a conversation about what's a little different. Because the mayor said it's exactly like, I think you just let it go.
Right. Thank you. I have a motion to be waived.
There we go.
Sorry.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Daniel?
Motion to adopt the order.
I do.
Second. Motion, second to adopt.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
May I motion to enact emergency clause?
Second. Motion, second to enact emergency clause.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for catching me last night.
You're welcome. I'm not... You don't have to.
Exactly the same, no.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Good catch. Okay. Fourteen, landing. Ordinance to rezonate five eleven West Denver from R one to C two, forging place emergency passage.
Remember, this is a request to rezonate five eleven West Denver from R one to C two for forging place. Forging place is a business apparently located on Main Street right down there, counseling service. They want to purchase the house that's currently owned by Mrs. Secret. If you all know, she lives in Shadow Lake, but she's wanting to sell that house and turn the house into a counseling... More of a... Better environment for counseling. They want to remodel the interior of the house, basically, so that the councilor will have their offices there, just as a area on Denver Street that has a lot of the C two already there, the electrical company, the barber shop, Mr. Backorder property, and all that. So, that is a request. There's various suggestions that we keep the emergency clause there, because this is a real estate transaction, and they're waiting for an extra product for the rezonance so they can continue on purchasing property. What is...
I'm excited, Martin.
What is that? Pardon? Mickerville right there.
This is it.
That's his property, of course, the...
That's the...
The... The... What's it zone?
I don't live there.
I never do.
It's still horrible, still alarming. And so is the...
I live in Ward Three. Newly designed.
Yeah. I wanted to... The home is secret, C two, which back orders properties, C two.
I'm going to make a motion to put the ordinance on by five only first reading.
Second. Motion, second. Five only first reading.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Dale?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Terry?
He is.
Danahus? Right now. An ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen dash zero nine to the rezoning start property of the city of Greenwood, amending the official zoning map of the city of Greenwood to the area and park, C and B.
I have a motion, wait, second, third reading?
Second. Motion, second to waive, second, third reading?
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Dale?
Yes. Okay, excuse me, on this, while we're waiting, while the...
Because there's a real estate transaction hanging about on this. They're trying to buy this place.
Which is not a public emergency.
Well, but you're going to reckon like three months, so...
Not a public emergency.
Well, it's the forging place, they're counseling.
Being representative here from the forging place, I'll see you answering questions.
I understand real estate issues and what have you, but it's more about locals, people know why we're rezoning. I think the whole reason for the pre-reading, what have it. I hope anybody's came and spoke, they know what's going on.
There's the owners.
They have holiday... They have holiday violation.
I'm sure the owner's going to speak for it.
Well, we may not even give a better argument.
If anybody has any... Probably has, it's certain. I think that's the whole reason why we closed the zone. Somebody driving by said, what's that? What? You want to do this deal here? And it's like, what kind of people looking on emergency? I'm just devil's advocate to you here.
Yeah. We pass emergency to all. It's one of the things that are not public.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're doing way too much.
But this is, like I said, is a real estate transaction. We took all the ninety to do that. It was simply by giving on emergency.
I'm also... I'm fine with... I ain't been to the reading, but I just hate the emergency clause. Although, although my heart's abused.
But now on the way, say, Irving? That's Mr. Backorder.
I have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion, second to adopt.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Dale?
Yes.
And Terry?
I guess so. Yes.
Okay.
I got a choice. I'll have my head cut now.
I like a motion to enact emergency clause.
Second. A motion, second to enact emergency clause.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Dale?
No.
Terry?
No.
That fails for...
Can I ask a question? I know we just... We're concerned about some emergency clauses because of what? Because it's already been posted, and are we worried about the emergency clause?
I... I have a pet peeve, emergency clause, but it's not, but I would still...
Well, I can tell you, absolutely. Not necessarily for discussion, but there are hordes of emergency clauses that have been enacted in...
I think it's a lot.
No, sir.
I don't think so.
One of them was for best scoring, and the other was for...
Not under a emergency clause?
It was. Backdoor.
Got back to the corner. I need to do the research. I need to buy one.
It's affected everybody in here. It's affected A.C. Brown when his son was doing business with the city. It's affected a lot of the land. I mean, it's.
I wish you'd let the driver try to just up under the city when everybody's up there breaking budget ordinances. Say, just try to backdoor a bunch of councilmen.
Darren, we need that back, please. Oh, that really upsets me because I have not tried to backdoor anyone.
I mean, you're calling these guys out right now, public meeting.
You're what?
You're calling them out right now to public.
No, we're just giving them examples.
Very good.
That's an example.
Yes, very good.
There's some, there's some examples of emergency clauses for waiving.
What, you got it for me?
No. For waiving lowest bidder, for buying vehicle, for buying trailer and things like that. So when I come in here and ask for an emergency clause to help somebody out that's trying to do business in Greenwood, I think that that's something that we should consider.
Well, it's adopted. I think we passed that, correct?
Uh, well, that one had three yeses and two noes.
Not in emergency clause. Any important.
Oh, yeah.
That makes it effective in thirty days.
The mayor has, well, passed it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my vote in for a yes to that emergency clause.
All right, well, that's.
This has been posted and correct?
Yes.
I vote yes.
So that makes it does pass and it does, the emergency clause does run there. Because that makes four yeses and two noes, so that's a majority. And that's the question.
Thank you. Uh, number fifteen, this is Mr. Marsh.
This is required. I, did you put it on your tablet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on there.
The audit's on your tablet.
You have, the whole audit, however, you can read that at your leisure. I did give you, just like I do for the financials, I gave you in your packet, a, one page of all the hot topics and key points that I want to make about the actual audit.
Did you give me a copy of that?
We're sitting up there.
Oh, we have it here.
There it is.
That?
We got it in our email, but we.
No, you have it in your packet. I stuffed it in.
It's in the left side.
Your packet on the left side, one page, it's in that, we, it's all ready.
All fun.
There it is.
I can't help what happens to your packets after I'm going to make your place.
I'm responsible.
Right. I just add that everything.
Okay. All right, so the key data and key notes to the audit and financials. This is a requirement that we do and tell you all about some of the good and the bad and ugly of what the audit determined and found. First thing is there's an independent auditor's report, and I do have to tell you that there are two basic opinions that are given. One is an opinion based on the U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We do not use the accrual based accounting in order to prepare our financials. Led audit comes in and actually converts our data into a presentation form of the actual GAAP version, but it's done after the fact. We don't book non-expense related, non cash expense related items such as depreciation. We don't put our total debt on the books. Those are just a couple of examples. They do that. We have a modified cash based accounting, so they gave an adverse opinion related to the U.S. general accepted accounting principles, which is given every year, and that's because the state of Arkansas allows us to have what's called a regulatory basis financial reporting, and they will give a clean opinion on that. They say that it's a non-modified clean opinion, which is the best you can have, saying that they, everything materially represents failure in all material respects, the financials of the city of Greenwood. So don't be alarmed if you read the fact that there's an adverse opinion. The adverse opinion is solely because we do not report on a U.S. generally accepted accounting. Then they give a report on internal controls and compliance. They did, I'll just read the quote from it, during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we considered to be material weaknesses, which is an excellent comment to make. That's what we look for in all of these. Uh, the other is related to, um, uh, compliance. It says complain, but it's compliance and other matters. The results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government audit. So that was a, that's a coup for us. We look to strive to not have any reportable items. Uh, the management letter says no issues came to their attention which were considered necessary to report. I gave some financial highlights there as far as our assets for general fund and street. They do not do the water sewer. They only do the street, general, and then they lump all other funds of all other departments, such as A and P and things that are not water sewer related into other category. But the two main ones that they audited are the general and street. And so I show the assets increased for the general fund, ten point six nine percent. The fund balance increased eight point three seven percent between two thousand nineteen and twenty. The street funds, uh, assets grew seventeen point twenty-two percent, fund balance increased twenty point eighty percent. They went through the notes to the financials. That's one of the things that if you wanted to really get an idea as to how, what in depthness they went. The notes to the financial shows that the city did not have a deposit policy, note two, by the way. The city does not have a deposit policy for custodial credit risk. As of December thirty first, twenty twenty, a total of five million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the city's bank balances were exposed to custodial credit risk. The balances exposed, exposed rather, were deposited in money market accounts consisting of federated treasury obligations and other U.S. governmental securities, which are not insured or collateralized. That normally would scare you to death, but it was not a finding. It's not a finding because it's considered a secondary risk, not a primary risk. We are collateralized. First, a farmer's bank actually takes our money and invests anything over the dollar amount that is insured by the FDIC into securities. The problem is that some of those securities that they're investing in, five million dollars of our fifteen million that's in collateralized in our fund balance, is in what they consider to be an uncollateralized manner. In other words, if it's, for instance, collateralized in a security that's in the name or held under title by, by farmer's bank, it's like farmer's bank owns it, so if farmer's bank is under, it becomes their asset. It's something that puts us at risk if the farmer's bank had defaulted or went under. Um, it is a secondary risk. I do want to talk to them about that comment because it does say money market accounts that are federated treasury obligations. It was my understanding that federal obligations are one hundred percent collateralized. I don't understand which ones that they're talking about. So I'm going to be looking for them when they come in and do the next audit to clarify and give us the detail as to what made up that five million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because U.S. governmental securities are normally one hundred percent funded, they're normally guaranteed. So I'm not sure the language. I, I actually show, how do you protect yourself against collateral credit risk? Well, first I want to talk about what's causing this is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Uh, the reason for us not effectively addressing the secondary custodial risk in our depository policy and procedures is that the solution to mitigate the risk is multiple accounts in multiple banking institutions. You don't want to put all your As in one basket. I've mentioned that several times. I've also mentioned the fact that we don't effectively use our idle cash and invest our idle cash. That is something that the Depository, um, and Investment Board is going to have to look at and make some recommendations on. We are ineffectively utilizing the company's money. I say that every year. And it's, this now puts a different light on it because it's saying we have a secondary risk should some of the investments go under that are not fully collateralized. So that's, that's where that comes from, our need to primary. We meet the primary collateralization, so don't get that wrong. That would have, if we didn't meet that hundred and five percent of the whole amount that's held in the banking institution outside of the FDIC's insured amount, we would be having a note that I would have to be writing a response to. And that was not one of them. That's just something there for the credit companies, S and P, to look at when they look at their bond ratings and decide whether that's warranting, uh, something that they should consider whenever they extend the rating for credit. Five million four hundred thousand dollars right now on our twelve million dollars in the general. And by the way, that is only the amount related to the general and the street funds. Five million of the twelve is just a little under fifty percent, like forty something percent of our money is collateralized in what they consider to be a risky investment. I'll get more information on that when I can talk to them further. Note seven is the legal debt limit. The city is subject to a constitutional limitation for bonded indebtedness equal to twenty percent of the total assessed value. In December thirty first of twenty twenty, the legal debt limit, I didn't spell that right either, for bonded debt was twenty-three million dollars. The city does not currently have any secured bond issued debt under these categories. Obviously, you know that we do have secured debt for water sewer, that's not part of the solid. Uh, short term financing obligations. The city is subjected to a constitutional limitation for short term financing equal to five percent of the assessed value of taxable property within the city as determined by their last tax assessment. At December thirty first, the legal debt limit for short term financing is eight, uh, six million one hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and eight. The amount of short term financing obligations was three hundred and fifty-four thousand, leaving a legal debt limit margin of five million seven seventy-one. That number has shrunk a little bit because that does not include purchase of the, um, engine or pumper, or I don't know which color it is, an engine, five hundred and sixty-six thousand. There is a little bit of a reduction due to the fact that that is a number that was as of twenty twenty, so all of the debt reduction of twenty twenty-one has not impacted that three hundred and fifty-four thousand yet. So we're sitting at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not three hundred and fifty because of the new engine's debt. One of the last, a couple of last things I want to show you is the audit responses and findings that we had. Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, when I first got here, we had one reportable finding and fifteen supplemental findings that I had to respond to. A lot of it was the fact that I was learning the ropes and getting used to what were some of the things that were being done pre-meet. And there was a lot of things that needed to be corrected, a lot of things that needed to be cleaned up. Most of it was as a result of a change of our fund accounting system from QuickBooks over to, I mean, yes, over to Sentinels. The fiscal year two thousand eighteen, we had two reportables and eleven supplemental. Two thousand nineteen, two reportables, twelve supplemental. And this year, after enormous effort that was put into our cleanup efforts and the cooperation by the auditors to provide us the details to help us do the cleanup, we had no reportables and six supplemental findings. It was the best audit we've had for years. These supplemental audit finding categories, these are what make up that six, just to show you it's not really material. Segregation duty is always going to have, we're going to write that, add if an item is required to put it in there. We'll get into more detail if you'd like to know what specific responses were, but, um, it's because of our staff size and we're not able to accommodate some of their matrix that they have set up for how to properly segregate a municipality for full control. Fixed assets, um, most of it had to do with the retirement of fixed assets, getting a capture of what assets are being removed. You do realize that we do not book fixed assets on our books, but we're required to keep a schedule of fixed assets and its purchase price. But when they're sold at auction or whether they're disposed of or transferred from one department to the other, we had a poor, uh, communication effort to let us know in finance what moved. We were able then to take their list that they are using after they went audited each department and rematched them. So we are currently one hundred percent tied with their numbers right now. Internal control policy regarding benefit payouts was a police department issue. It was actually an error. That's a one time finding. They responded to it. I did, but you signed it. It was a, uh, it was a payout of vacation benefits, apparently right at the time of this audit, the time that they're doing the audit on in twenty twenty. They changed their policy, but right at that time, they paid out under the old policy. It wasn't communicated correctly. They forgot about the policy being there. That's been addressed. That's not going to be an issue going forward. And the outstanding items on bank reconciliations, that's one of the last things that we're working on right now, cleaning up. There's a lot of things in there that I could very easily turn over to unclaiming property. Unfortunately, I'm not so sure when I look at some of those items, because a lot of them are journal entries, as an outstanding item, I'm not sure the correctness of them based on the date. I have to go back to actually do a lot of research, find out, is this even a valid item on the bank correct? And that's the, that's the audit in a nutshell. Do you have any other questions you can let me know?
Congratulations on the zero.
Yeah.
Thank you for this summary.
Very good.
We will officially rename that audit in a nutshell.
In a nutshell, please. CNN.
Thank you, sir.
Set the bar pretty high.
Absolutely. Good job, as always. Number sixteen is a confirmation of Jim Reynolds to fill a vacancy on the Waterways Water Commission. Uh, Mr. Reynolds' name was brought forth to the Waterways Water Commission and approved, I believe unanimously, and correct?
Correct.
And he is to replace with, with council's president, I think, uh, Jed Parker, who rolled off, went off at the end of the year.
His weight to both terms, the commission, but didn't give him a weight.
No, he ran for state revenue.
We have a policy that says you don't serve on two commissions or meetings, but he did one on one, so it's still be compliant with that.
And he's, he's not, obviously attended a couple of meetings, I think. He's a bystander.
Why, by the motion, approve the confirmation.
Second. Motion second. We're being a confirmation.
Yeah, then, uh, around second.
Yes.
Mr. Micker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
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 And did we give a vote to approve?
No.
The audit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a vote.
We all just giving you kudos. So, yeah.
That doesn't count. It was a unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous.
Need a vote to exempt that.
In a nutshell.
I'm making a motion.
Motion to second to adopt. Remember to accept the audit before.
Mr. Micker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Mr. Dink?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I don't think it's first zero we've ever had before.
Oh, don't, don't, don't do that. He's already looking.
He's already. No, I'm, I'm saying in like seventeen years, I don't think there's ever been a zero.
See, you know what we have every day.
No, you never.
No, I can't get in there, you're in.
Giant. Mike, you know of the zero we've had before?
No.
There's always been something.
Always will something.
You all have a two point one, but you don't have that before you use that.
We'll all.
Uh, I think that's the only thing you got. We got something, we just love ourselves. I do have a agreement, this is our first zero.
That's awesome.
It is, absolutely. Okay, so, uh, and I just want to say, I think Mr. Reynolds can make a fine addition to the Waterways Water Commission. He's, he's pumped up to save the lakes for whatever reason. Number seventeen is, uh, he's not here, I was just going back there. Number seventeen is a confirmation of David Dusenberry to fill a vacancy, and I can't remember for the life of me who came off.
Oh, Patrick Simmons.
Patrick Simmons, and they, so, uh, Mr. Dusenberry is manager of Donald's, and so is Mr. Simmons, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Simmons.
New manager, so.
Can I just ask one of the privileges?
We discussed it. Yeah, we just talked about it.
My motion is third to Mr. David Dusenberry to fill the empty commission.
Second. Motion second.
Hang on, can you say? Micker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
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 Would you get time?
No.
I'll let you go. Uh, number eighteen is planning ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance eighteen dash oh nine zoning regulations first reading.
Uh, we were looking at this, uh, eighteen oh nine zoning ordinance, and there was some confusing language in there. I thought Kenny figured out upon himself to go through there and try to make this, uh, the language a little more easier to read. Roberts, if you'd like to come up and tell some of the changes that you went through. He, instead of just changing, showing you a few of the, uh, sentences, he went ahead and just rewrote the, the entire piece of the ordinance.
Now, Charlotte, did you improve the entire, all thirty, thirty-two pages in their package?
No, the whole ordinance is on their tablet as it exists, and then the portion that we're amending is what they have on paper.
Oh, we're changing this article eight, which is, should be in his package, the thirty-eights, twenty-two. I mean, and this is dealing with how we handle rezoning from the city. Again, we made a change a year and a half ago to a, a few items have come up in the planning commission. How we're working on it, and we decided to redo the whole thing. The sunny said clear, easy to read language. He needs changes in the overall. Look on page thirty-nine. Paragraph two, page one. You can, the petition shall provide a legal description of property involved, uh, the zoning question. And this is the new part, and the statement and diagram explaining why the proposed changes will not conflict with neighboring land use. This is to force the petition to put in writing. But he thinks the impact will be on the surrounding area, and this has come up, some of the R ones or five changes. Where the commission's had questions, I know y'all have had some questions as to how this might impact the neighborhood. Now we'll have a petition in writing come to us and with diagram showing exactly what he's proposing for that area. Uh, paragraph two, we've changed the one time fee of fifty dollars, uh, to two hundred dollars, but that also includes, we had a separate fee of a hundred dollars for publishing the ad. We're just changing this to a hundred fifty dollars will be charged from two hundred dollars. And that nothing else, the rate of inflation, just the hours involved in the city. In sub-paragraph three, we're, we've addressed the land use plan. Our land use plan gives our master plan to zoning. And the zoning ordinance actually. And the zoning ordinance actually puts the teeth in. We're saying they're also responsible for giving us some language they're proposing that if we have to make a change for the land use plan. So this is moving more to the arms of the petitioner. And hopefully also to use, do we have any on the series, just as a idea he wants to rezone, hasn't really thought through. The next area is down in paragraph B13, that talks about mail. State law requires somebody to publish notice on the newspaper. That's all the state law requires you resume. We go beyond that and also post the sign, and we also do a mailing. And the current ordinance, we talk about 300 feet from the property. And that has raised a lot of issues of 300 feet from what part of property? Center of property, we're talking about from the edge, from the corners, which is never ever a property. Just trying to do 300 feet gets into a lot of work and opens up some legal issues if we mismeasure it and somebody comes back in and says, well, I was 300 feet away from this spot. We do it, we change it to just to the adjacent property. So everyone around that property will get a notice, but we're not going to try and measure up to 300 feet. Mind you, the problem with Fort Smith ad, with the gas station, tax, less of the problem. Remember all that, while that, while I wasn't notified, we're trying to avoid that. Subparagraph three on that page, staff review, simply formalizing what we do already. Saying that when the reseller comes in, we'll have all the city departments take over that. The next page, page 40, paragraph one. We're saying that the reasons that commission approves rezoning, or will approve and forward to the council, will be put in writing. As it is now, there's really no record of it in the minutes of meeting. If you wanted to do research, go back, well, why was this rezoning approved and this one wasn't, and are we being consistent? You'd have to go through the minutes of every meeting. But it's now we're saying, when the commission makes a motion, we'll do it in the form and have it written. We approve this because of this. It would be a lot easier two, three years in the future if it went back and said, well, this is why we approved it. I think it also improves our legal standard in terms of being consistent. Saying for subparagraph two, if we deny, disapprove, we'll put that in writing also coming in. If someone wants to appeal the disapproval by the commission, i.e. won't be forwarded to the council with the misapproved, will ask that person in writing to submit an appeal through the city department to the council. Get it put on the next agenda meeting, and they have to do that within 15 days. Subparagraph four, we have language on there about no application, don't be considered within 60 days of a disapproval. Simply give everyone time to think about what they're doing before they come back first. On page 41. Let's go back. Subparagraph three, the procedures through my city council. Just putting a more language on there, putting what you have, and we'll forward it to you. State council, paragraph F, you all, as you've done before, can adopt or not confer with planning commission through them. In paragraph three, we've added language. Resonings can be done by petitioner, property owner coming in and requesting rezoning. The planning commission has done rezonings, proposed rezonings to the county. And you all have the authority to do a rezoning yourself. But we're putting a language here now saying that council should do it. It will then go back to the planning commission and go through the same procedure as any other rezoning. And that, not the this council, but some council in the future from just coming in and without any staff approval, one night in the meeting, passing rezoning, doing bird sequelas on it, and before you know what happened, it's lost. So this would stop that kind of rogue council actions from going on. And simply says you do the same thing that everyone else. And that's what we have in paragraph four, is what the planning commission does. And that's in more detail than we currently have. Paragraph five. Standards for approval. We're actually putting in standards for approval, and it's all common sense things that will consider a master land use plan, street plan, recommendations of departments and so on, when we do it. It's a minimum standard for how we should handle the rezoning request. Now, paragraph D, implied B. This is new, this goes back to the R1, R5 issues we've been having on the commission, and you all have seen on the council. That if someone wants to rezone R5, or even to a commercial property like you just asked Mike on the business fee issue on that. The petitioner needs to describe to the commission and to the council, again, what's the impact of that going to be. And we're already saying it needs to be preserving a R1 characteristic of it, like a commercial property or an R5 property. It still needs to be, the characteristic needs to blend in with the neighborhood. We're not permitting it. We're simply saying, show us how you're going to blend it in. These are discussions you have had, with some of our public issues and the commission has had on that. And we haven't really had a firm footing for telling someone at this point that you need to come in to us with your ideas. We've been holding it to a standard that hasn't been in the ordinance. So this creates that standard, and we can have a development saying, you need to come into us with maybe not a full preliminary plan. You need to sketch a vision and show us what you're going to do that, so we can ensure that it does fit in the standard. And that's the ordinance and the changes. And Sonny, we're asking for emergency calls, right?
Pardon me.
The commission spent two months on this, and we'll have three readings on it. So if anyone takes a chance to read it, if something doesn't make sense, if there are dramatic errors, all that, something you want to add, you can put it behind it. Put that in there. I would ask you to pass it on the first reading, so we can continue to move forward on it.
Robert does so much work on this.
Pressure is your initiative, and you're what?
Really not.
I'm making a motion if we can put this on first reading.
He's got jokes to him, so let's look. Have a motion in second.
For second?
I believe, oh, oh, sorry, Mr. Maker.
Yeah, Rod and then?
Yeah.
Rod, Ron. Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll read.
I think it wasn't much. I've been trapped upstairs. My husband's foot surgery for two weeks now.
Did she put you up there so you couldn't get down? You don't have to answer that. Thank you.
An ordinance revealing or replacing zoning ordinance 18-09.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Number 18 is rights with approval of 2022 contracts.
You're in your back there?
Yes.
Yeah. They're a poor, that we're going to be looking at. First one I want to point out to you is the 2022 Sebastian County Library contract. That dollar amount has not changed. It is in the budget at $2,500. It is a salary stipend, if you will, salary offset. It's designed to help to trace some of the costs associated with the provision of services for the library, the librarian. All that's changed, and that is the dates. It is a one-year contract. There's nothing really shattering about it, or she wanted to change the dollar, no, but that's already in the body of it. The next contract, and then move on.
We need to do these one at a time?
You do them as a group.
Yeah.
I don't.
Mike, sorry. Good, okay.
Which one?
Group. Group, group, yep.
Or is it one of, that's one of, that's another?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Good question. You can.
I would do it one at a time.
Why don't we do it one at a time?
All right.
I confirm.
I'm shooting from the hip, man.
Anybody want to do?
I'll make a motion about the library, and I'll direct them to approve this as written, just a resolution or a document.
Just contract. Motion is second to deduct or accept a company.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yep.
The library's been built outside of the city limits.
Do what? That's the current library. The current library. Current, current library. I had a stand-in.
Next year, you can probably discuss that.
What was it in the meeting?
Well, the deal is, we can't pay anything unless the contracts are signed.
Well, they're talking about, well, the things built, and they would build.
The next one we're talking about is the Greenwood Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Service Agreement. This is in term January 1st, 2022, for one year. Basically, it's the same contract that he had last year with $2,000 a month, $24,000 equal monthly payments. And it's for the heading of the economic development. The work, this is in the budget, and it was something that was put there for you to review during the budget time. This is the actual contract. Nothing really changed to it other than the dates.
My motion to approve that.
Second. Motion is second.
Out of 12 of that, says the mayor has been authorized by relative resolution to city council to execute this agreement. I think we already gave the mayor that.
Execute this one? Not all of these.
Well, they just say this one.
This one. You're giving him, they should all, you take that. You're giving him the authority to sign on behalf of the city and execute this contract.
Are you just thinking there's no resolution attached to it?
No, I just think you pointed, I'm confused.
It made it sound to me like we already adopted a resolution.
Oh, no.
There is a resolution that the mayor's to sign all contracts for the city, only the next.
To execute it.
Execute.
They were busy being approved on it.
I don't think that's just right. Hey, Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Eric?
He is.
And in case, you did this rather quick, and that's good. I think that showed his confidence in what we're doing. Well, Mr. Purvis back there, I'm very happy with our relationship with the chamber, so just so you know.
The next one is the 2022 Sebastian Retired Citizens Association, that is the senior center. You do not have the lease agreement for the current senior center, because that doesn't expire until next year. It's a three-year agreement for them. This is a one-year agreement. It's exactly the same, only changing the dates from January 1 of 21 to 22, 22 to January to December, a one-year contract. It is still the $24,000 that is being provided for the equal installments for the contract, for the services, which comes under exhibit A, which is attached to this agreement. No different than the ones we've been following all along. And it still has the $25,000 in requested reimbursement for covered expenses in excess of the established limit. Well, it's $25,000 for utilities and repairs and maintenance. The way we structured it in the past, and this one is the same, is that it can, you can go over in one and under in the other, as long as you don't go over $24,000, $25,000, excuse me, collectively for both. So if their repairs and maintenance is more than what their utilities are, we cap them at 25 for the combination of both. Should they have a need, like an air conditioning system, to go over that amount, this contract requires them under section four to come to the city council, and you will have to be reviewed on case-by-case basis.
Mike, motion to approve this contract.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the contract.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So that's for last. This is the 2022 South Sebastian Boys and Girls Club Contract for Services. We discussed a request from the director to double the amount of money for his capital, reimbursable capital amount that he supports with extended, with receipts, of 24 to 48,000. We decided, or at least it was my understanding, that we decided to stay with the original contract at 24. That is what is in the budget. However, we added paragraph number three in here, which is consideration by the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, as consideration, the service to provide 51,000 and 24,000. That's not added. That's the, that's the contract that we currently have. But number four has been added to this contract. That's the only thing that's different, other than the dates, from the previous one. Now, I know we discussed 24,000. It was what he was originally asking for more. And the way it was worded is that if he wants anything more than $24,000, which is in paragraph three, that has already been budgeted and you would be approving, he would have to come to the city council and provide his case or present his case, and you would have to make a decision based on our financial position at that time. Now, I did not put the cap of 24,000 more in there. I left it open, because you're going to be looking at everything. You can cap it, self-cap it at whatever you want. But he has to come to you, anything greater than 24,000, you have to approve him on a case-by-case basis. Sort of like him asking for a grant. And that forces him, because he's got other options that he's looking at, which would be maybe even the AEP commission.
Or some other. Part of something in there, you said, just bring us the receipt, we'll reimburse you, it was up to you.
That's what he's doing on the 24,000.
The first 24.
The first 24. And this first 24,000 is over and above, and we've done it.
The 51.
Right.
Well, we did, last year, last year, we did 51,000 for his services, and 24,000 for capital paid out on a reimbursable basis for cost incurred.
Yes.
And we capped it at 24. So he actually submitted a bill that would put in that 25,000 something. We only paid up to the 24, and he had to come up with the rest. Now, if he wanted to, he could have come to you now with paragraph four in here and said, I'd like an additional 1,500. I've got an overrun, and you would have to approve that. And you would probably say, I'm word of the same. And I would tell you whether it's a yay or a nay, or if it's going to cause a hardship. You know, I don't know where our city sales and use tax are going to go, or how much money we're going to get from that. The trend is highly positive. We'll have additional revenues.
We discussed paragraph four with him that night he was here, or just something kind of.
We did, but I think.
He came in asking for another 24.
Right.
And you all, you know, it was discussed that, come back when you need it.
If you need, when it is.
When it is.
I just didn't cap it at 24 additional. I left it open-ended.
He'd come back and ask.
He'd go back for 50 if he wants to. You can cap it.
Kind of maybe left it during the budget discussion, we're going to stick with our 24, we'll revisit it after we run the trends.
I just hope.
It just gives him an option to say, you can revisit it.
I just hope, since we said, bring us your receipts.
Yes.
We'll reimburse you.
Yes.
I just hope he doesn't come back with another set of receipts that we say is not going to reimburse you.
Well.
After the 24.
He knows, he knows what's almost, well, he knows what's guaranteed right now.
Right.
It is.
He doesn't think he's, it's more than total of 75,000. I mean, we've had those conversations. Our total giving to this Boys and Girls Club, right, your total giving is $75,000. Tom just wrote in that option. It's no different than him walking in on any day, if you will, and asking, but it's in the contract that he can come back and ask. No, he's not under the impression, I'm not, he's not here to agree with me, but he, and my impression, he is definitely not under the impression he's going to get 75 plus 24,000. I mean, he's got to come back with something and say, would you pay any favor? No, he, walking in with the receipt, he's not.
Just that second, the paragraph four needs. Just that second, the paragraph four needs to be asked before you spend, that's supposed to free.
Yes.
Spend and I'll bring you the receipt, we'll pay back.
Right, and he is well aware of that because we have had numerous conversations. I just made it similar to the senior centers, where they have an option to.
But that would be, I understand you're, that would be bad.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion second to approve the contract.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
That is the summary of the contracts.
Can, can we go back for just a second on the, the SRCA? On the I three, we have the, the, the second 25, if you will.
What's the first one?
An additional consideration, the city agrees to reimburse cost utilities and routine repair and maintenance up to but not exceeding 25,000. Would, if he pruded for us to put except no single item, any single item larger than X, each be brought before the council? So in other words, we're saying, we're going to, we're going to reimburse you up to 25,000. If they walk in here and say, we just bought us a new air conditioner, costs 24,500.
Read the next one, number four, capital expenditures. And what you're describing would be capital expenditures, like we need a new air conditioner.
So.
That doesn't fall into routine repairs and maintenance.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So that's what I put that in there for, was in case you had to replace the roof or you had to do something like that, now you have the discretion to say, if you will, and how much you will pay for it.
Or do we pay it anyway?
Right.
So again, though, here's the.
So they have to come for any capital.
Right. Anything that you construed to be outside of routine repairs and maintenance, if they want to repair their air conditioner, that's different. Now, we come under their 25,000 one.
I mean, I guess on routine, wouldn't spend. I mean, I was thinking, I don't know, I don't know what it'd be, but if they go spend 10,000 on this and 10,000 on that, well, you're going to run out of money for it.
All of them issue for one really quick. Although I will tell you that that language that's in there was the language that was put into the lease by farmers. We extracted that and put it into their contract so that farmers didn't have the control over what they made us pay for it.
Yeah.
Now, again, section three says that we're going to hang 24,000 in equal payments, so 2,000 a month.
That's for the services they provide to the senior center.
But then we're going to go an additional 25,000 for reimbursable maintenance and repairs.
And utilities. That, that's in the contract, that lease that we had with, with.
Utilities at the kicker.
Farmers. So we've agreed, but we, before it was open-ended. It was, you just build us and we'll pay it. Well, now we put the cap on it at 25. And then we said, hey, if you go over that, let's talk.
And, and we've done that, they capped on utilities, I believe, one year.
One time, yes.
So it was a month or two or whatever that we did not pay.
We put a limit on it so that it would cut our losses a little bit. All that goes away when we own our own building. We only contract the services then. And they would be under our solar too, under lease elements.
We approve them, yeah?
Yes, he just asked to approve.
Um, thank you.
Don't look, note your words.
Thank you, Chief. Number 20 is police department, ordered to waive competitive bidding on Durango for B.
Thanks.
Thanks, buddy. Yes, sir. On that page.
I was, I think it's. We'll stay here and say.
Oh, okay. Hi, Doc.
Hi.
Mr. Henry.
Uh, in my budget, I asked for a Durango that was $30,000. Oh, oh, it's after the year went by to this new year, they come out with a new procurement for the state of Arkansas. If you go down there to police vehicles, which is usually full of options, there was two. Ford can't get chips and shut down a bunch of, they can't build me a new car. It's hard to start transitioning into silver. I'm trying to phase out the white ones and they still can't help. Uh, the other option is not speed rated for pursuit for mercy in response. So I called Kobe Fred and I said, where's, what's everybody getting this Tahoe in the United States? They didn't, they were sold out. Well, five weeks later, he called me and said, here on the blues, but we got a new silver Tahoe from Florida. Let me see what I can do, I can't, so he just didn't. So the difference, and what I'm looking for is the difference in the vehicles. Uh, the couple for the Durango is 30,000, that's a change on our front.
He says 39,500. Your quote says 39,500.
No, the Durango, the original Durango.
30.
Yeah. And then this Tahoe plus the freight came out to 4,002,500. So that difference is what I'm asking for in the vehicles. Uh, I need to retain the 13,000 per hour for him, as that bill doesn't include everything we will need, such as driving and, uh, actually another radio for the wrong, just went down, so. But that's what I'm asking for, is difference in the vehicles. I can't, basically, I can't use state contract because there's no options there to use.
Can't, could what chief was, or?
There's no options to choose from, as you can see. I mean, there, you know, two years ago, every car was still in here, but I didn't choose from. I have two now, and one can't get into a vehicle I need and now it's not speed rated, so.
Okay, so he had 30 originally and then he had 13 for the outfit. So there's 43 originally we had for the Durango, we would rather go.
That's 50 included, the outfit.
Yes. We would both ask.
Well, I think the difference in the vehicles, trying to keep them out because they're 13. He didn't include everything in there, I have to buy a base plate, didn't go through that quote, it doesn't include the map for computer, and buy a computer, uh, on that now. But that totals, I was, it's just about 13,000. Computer, the, I have the printer, print on now, the $300 piece, computer is 1,200, the graphics are about 800, the brain factory and have John put on graphics. So basically, it came out about the differences in the parts of the vehicles. So we just concentrate on the price of vehicle and leave that outputting at 13,000. I just need the difference of the 40,250 and 30,000 and change.
454.
So I guess I'm confused, because here I see a quote of 50,000, so.
Right, that's what he's doing down there. That's, the cars can come just like that, with what he can do down there. If you go through that quote, it doesn't include the graphics, the computer, I need to buy the printer. He's providing what he can down there, and if you buy the car from them, they have to output it. So a couple of things he can't provide that I have to buy additionally, including the graphics, he don't have to do on his back.
Now, you're saying he, this could be Little Rock or Florida?
Uh, it's in Little Rock. Kobe Fred got, you know, all credit, so.
Good work.
As far as competitive bidding, uh, these are police guards, it's not, uh, it's not obviously very valid, so.
But we can, you don't look up to waive competitive bidding, because no one can be that competitive in today's market for a car, what year, 2022?
Yes.
Yeah, over, about a seventy, about eighty stock. But I guess legally, the work competitive bidding needs to be waived.
I have a motion to waive, waive competitive bidding, which is a question of place vehicle.
You mean, because it's on press reading, it's not?
First reading by House only, and then I think I'm out, and the rest of the others.
You'd also have to increase the budget amount.
I would have mentioned that, it's got to be a resolution to increase the budget by a top ten, right?
And that's the resolution, it'd be good version.
Yeah, you can't do, it's the cart and horse.
Can't do one.
I think you have to waive the bidding and then the resolution.
All right, that's where we're at.
There.
We're on version.
I know we're going to have to vote.
I'll second.
Okay.
The motion second.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
That's unanimous, already the Tahoe. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for current civil police vehicles, bearing an emergency, and ready to.
Uh, motion to waive, second, third, read.
Say.
Mr. Baker?
I'd like a question. I, uh.
Ms. How?
Wait, do you add my vote?
Wait, wait a second.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ben?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Make a motion to adopt the, first, we, or if it works.
Second.
Motion second, if that's.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
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 So I guess the mercy is, we don't have three months to let this car sit there any more.
I have to ask due to my meeting this morning and my, my sermons to the directors, you, you can't buy this allegiance, you're in town, right? Thank you very much.
You don't have nine days, or 50 degrees.
We just rely.
Alliance, sorry.
I'll make a motion when we.
I'll tell you later, I need to.
Second.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
No.
Tim Jerk?
100% yes.
That's about it.
Now, we can go with the resolution, do I have to have it written or come and write it?
Have we gotten it this month?
Uh, we always say, we haven't written it.
Yeah, we need ready, but what you can do is you can.
Just.
Pretty basic.
Now, why?
It's a party.
What was the exact amount?
Well, the difference between his 4,250 and the 34,540 that's in the budget is 9,796.
So if we had a resolution.
What line are you modifying?
I modified 67, 610 capital expenditures in the budget.
So if we modify 67, 610 for 9,796, she's covered?
Correct.
And you can. I'll make a motion and adopt the resolution, modify 97, 610.
97, 96.
67, 610.
Oh, it was the line I.
Okay, that's a lot of numbers.
67, 610 is the line.
Right.
For the amount of 9,796 dollars and zero cents.
Right. Motion second.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim Jerk?
Yes.
Just as a point of order, do we have to add that resolution to the agenda, or?
Interesting.
Want to be in the?
Probably.
It's due.
Let's do that, yes.
So.
It was out of 21.
Out of 21, you need to vote, we, we're just going to add it.
We're going to add it, and that'll be entering on the, you know, on the record.
Yeah, we have to redo the resolution after we end it.
We're not. We don't believe the box is going to be out there.
We're not.
Pay for it.
Resolution to amend budget for police vehicles.
On 21.
I agree with you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Resolution to the budget.
Thanks, son.
All right.
So the reason I said what I said, I'm messing with the chief, but so I made it very clear to all the partners this morning, where we are going, and not that we haven't done a pretty good job, but I think we've done a great job of purchasing within the city of Greenwood, Arkansas. I'm talking about anything and everything that's possible. And if you can't buy within the city of limits, I'm insisting that we buy within the county, or at least use somebody that's, we got, for instance, we, we once had a contractor come in and do some work here in the city. He needed some things, he had to work from outside, but at least we were using contractors. So I'm just making it across the board and, and everybody's, you know, I'm not saying they're okay, but we're going to have to. We're trying to do all that better, a better job.
Thank you for my business owner.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Yeah, to the length, I'm talking for votes and add this to the agenda.
The resolutions?
We don't have to vote on agenda items.
Yeah, we can.
As long as there are no oppositions?
Yeah.
Things very particular.
Okay. Uh, partner reports questions to the council. You over here?
How we doing, so we've got all the easements on the side?
No, it's okay.
They gave a little punch.
Huh?
It's like.
That's okay. So I'll let Mike, so we, we were scheduled to have a hearing with the morrow on that, I'll let Mike talk about it. I'm getting that way too.
I've given an order about notice of the hearing, we have to have the hearing, it's been so long. She has, uh, whether or not the word was issued correctly. And we have that scheduled and we've got to slow it down on Thursday. And so we have, we're going to reschedule it. We have to have a scheduled part of that till we, till we get those to the morrow to be here to convince her. So right now, we have an order, so the cars, we can proceed. I think that the mayor is trying to sell our dot to go ahead and, and agree with Mike, go ahead and we'll leave. But I didn't get a notice today of the reschedules, you Alex, Alex, I thought we were.
So Alex, I think he was giddy, to say the least, I think.
He had fun with it.
Pulling the parking lot.
After hearing, you have to hear it after every single meeting, I got it.
Yeah, he did, he got it in Mike, Mike's direction. So Judge Lad signed the order, and so literally, as Mike was explaining, Jeremy, it's in Jeremy Shore's hands to get our dots approval. We have no notice to proceed from them, because they, they're going to have, to my terms, they're going to have to recognize that as the email to move forward. So, and we, and as you know, I think you know, the, we, as in through Jeremy, will put that out for bid, so all are waiting for it now. I don't think our dot's going to go put it out for bid yet, I don't think, until the hearing, that's my opinion. We haven't heard back from them officially. And Jeremy?
I anticipated the hearing, they're going to say it's all created, and then they'll schedule it for a jury trial at some point to determine how much we're going to attach for, to deposit it at 3,000.
A little bit, almost 3,200.
A little dollars in the, in the state's office.
A brief about it.
Which, yeah, covers that, so I think we're behind. I think that we should be geared up to our project, we still.
That's awesome.
And we will be soon, when I say we, and we'll soon be working on the next phase two. So here, let me, let me tell you this real quick on phase two, I don't, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. A year ago now, we were approved for phase two, as you know, through our dot. And we're making sure that Jeremy is reporting to make sure we don't lose that, along with still reporting on phase one. Phase two, uh, when we originally applied for phase two, this was just because of, there was no particular reason, but we were going from where we were going to end in my terms, in golden years, to go toward Walmart, right? Well, and then phase three, for whatever reason, was put down, coming from Dr. Singer's office, back into town, this, this direction. I told, Jeremy asked me if we wanted to keep it that way, or did I want to switch it? And I said, I kind of like coming back into town, but I think it's going to be utilized more than the other section. And he totally agreed with me, and he thought that that is a wise thought, so it's not a stone, if you guys are okay with that, that's, that's how I'm going to leave it. We're going, we're going to switch it.
One that might be easier getting easements than the other?
Uh, Jeremy seemed to believe it was easier coming back to. Now, Jeremy also says, there's a lot, there's that, and there's a lot of concrete and or asphalt that we probably will not be digging up to put a sidewalk in, which would make any sense.
That was going to be my question, was I think what got us on this turn, phase one, you know, we had this discussion before, that it was engineered, this one.